Council members present. We need seven more for a quorum. If it gets close to one time, I'll let you know. Ten thirty-five and we have five council members. We now need five for a quorum. All of whom got an extra half-hours review because somebody told them this wouldn't start till ten thirty. No one told me, but everyone else seems to have known that, but they're not here. I need Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Savornic, and Mr. Wax. They are not here. Mr. Padilla, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Savornic, and Mr. Wax are missing. Hardly any action. There is no action until we get five of them here. There will only be eleven of us today. The gentlemen are all the gentlemen are the ones who are out. Ms. Walters is the oldest person in this hall. Nobody else has an excuse. So don't wait to be number eleven. Six council members. We need ten for a quorum. I've decided that those who come in after now are going to get one minute on the clock, not three. And no money.
...the preparation process by the resources of the budget before us between Councilperson Chik, Mr. Sapowski, Glanter, and Ridley Thomas in reverse order. And I suspect in a few moments you'll see several other members hurrying to get here.
All in favor? Of course, like there's not enough of us to vote it in even in reverse order. Maybe we ought to start picking the cutoff. Six, seven members left. Three for a quorum. Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Savornic. While you're walking out of review till ten thirty. Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Padilla, and Mr. Savornic. Probably all in the same place. Now we're supposed to be debating the budget. Okay, we're down to Pacheco and Savornic. Well, maybe we should start a pool on what time this meeting will begin and what time it will end and we can raise some more money for the city budget. Well, believe me, some of us have been contemplating that since ten fifteen.
Madam Chair, in regards to that pool, being that I got the superfect of the preface, I got my money on Pacheco getting here first.
And here we go. Good morning. This is a special meeting of the City Council on Monday, May 21st for the purpose of deliberating the city budget. It is six minutes to eleven. A little bit behind schedule here, guys. Please call the roll.
Burton, Chik, Fuhr, Hernandez, Holden, Miss Kowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Savornic, Wax, Walters, and Glanter. It's ten members present in a quorum. Madam President.
Okay, thank you. First order of business? We don't have to do minutes or any of that stuff.
Item number one.
Okay. First thing we're going to do is finish off the public hearing we began the other day. I have two more people who've asked to address the council. First Alex Mann and then Susan Nimoy.
I'm Alec Mann. I'm here today representing the Hillside and Canyon Federation. Each of you will receive a copy of the statement from the Canyon-Hillside Federation regarding a proposal which has been put before Mr. Fuhr's committee and Mrs. Walters' committee regarding the opinion of the Federation associations that specific measures will be needed to preserve and protect our existing street trees that will be alongside sidewalk panels that will be torn up doing and fixed during the sidewalk repair and replacement program. Without guidelines, the trees next to the sections of sidewalk being repaired will be at risk of being cut down, obviously. And replacement trees will take twenty years to provide the same energy and environmental and property value benefits that they now give citizens. We all want safe sidewalks and it's interesting that while the last figures available show that in 1999 approximately $2 million was paid out by the city on trip and fall accidents, apparently caused by tree root issues and pushing up sidewalk panels. However, the city forest has 630,000 trees, so paying out $2 million is less than 1% of the value of that forest. The forest has reached a value now of approximately a billion dollars. So paying out 1% on these accidents doesn't excuse accidents. The sidewalk surfaces obviously need repair. But this relates to other issues which concerns those of us whose associations are affiliated with the Hillside Federation. And this, incidentally, involves about 200,000 people, so I think this carries, should carry some environmental and fiscal weight with the city council. The second sheet that you have before you shows that a single tree, particularly large trees, can have an air cleansing and air conditioning effect, the equivalent of about ten house air conditioners running 20 hours a day. And if we place a replacement value on these large trees, and replacement values, Arborists tell me, on large trees of the type we're talking about can be as much as $25,000 per tree. If, for example, and this is just for example, and I think it's a modest, very modest figure, we lose say 5,000 large trees during the sidewalk repair program, we are, we could be losing a total value in a resource that's extremely important in terms of energy conservation and public health and property values that could come to as much as $125 million in replacement cost. We will also have an accompanying reduction in the energy benefits which these trees are now bringing us. As I pointed out before, the paper in front of you gives that information on how the trees reduce particulates by as much as 60% and also enhance the conservation of energy. But if tree cutting is allowed to go without any guidelines for preservation and protection, we could see the electrical consumption go up enormously because these are obviously providing shade and other advantages which cut down on the amount of power consumption. When you have an air conditioner that's under a shade tree, it even brings greater conservation benefits. So I think we, as we look at this question of the sidewalk repair and construction program, it's essential that this resource be protected for the reasons that I've given with specific guidelines which are listed in the letter that you have before you from the Hillside Federation so that this valuable resource is protected. And only where it cannot be avoided, we are to leave trees standing, particularly the bigger trees, to protect the energy base, the environmental health base, and the property value base. And the measures, the measures are reasonable. They're... value base. And the, the measures, the measures are reasonable. They're, I think they're feasible. And as Mr. Fuhr at a recent Budget Committee meeting had suggested to the head of Street Services, he asked for a report to be brought in as to how such a program could be carried out and at what cost. I have yet to see such a report from the head of Street Services, and I think this is something that we should have, if we're to protect our resource base doing this large program, from which the, the disabled people as well as regular citizens whose homes are on those residential streets which will be severely impacted if we allow this program to go forward without protection, specific protection and preservation benefits.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Let me hear from our other speaker first.
Did you, Madam Chairman, did you get the, the document I dropped off in your office regarding this?
I'll get it. I'll make sure I've got it. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I'll get it. My staff has it.
I thought the secretary.
We'll, we'll get it. Let me call on Susan Nimoy.
I asked that those materials be handed out.
They were distributed. I don't happen to have mine in my hand, but they have been distributed. Susan Nimoy.
Good morning. My name is Susan Bay Nimoy. My husband Leonard Nimoy and I recently gave $1 million to the renovation and expansion of the Griffith Observatory. I think most of you know that by a letter that was placed on your desk this morning. I wanted to give you a little background of how and why it is that we decided to make this contribution to the observatory. Leonard has long had a passion for space, science, technology. And recently, we read a little blurb in the LA Times which talked about this expansion and renovation of the observatory. And we immediately called and asked if we could come up and see this cultural icon that both of us remember from, well, certainly I from my childhood because I was born in Los Angeles, and Leonard for the last 50 years of living here. And we learned several things that I'd like to share with you. Some of these facts you probably already know, but these facts were, are responsible for our decision to move forward with our contribution. The first fact is that the observatory, while it was built in 1935, has not undergone a capital renov, capital campaign to renovate or expand the observatory in 66 years. When it was built in 1935, there were 1.4 million people living in Los Angeles. Today, there are over 8 million. We have 2 million people who pass through the observatory annually. That's more than lived in Los Angeles when the observatory was built. Additionally, there are 50,000 schoolchildren who pass through the building each year. The building is in desperate need of renovation and expansion in order to accommodate the 2 million people that pass through it annually. And clearly, once it is renovated and expanded, many, many more people will be, many millions more people will be visiting it, just like what happened with the Rose Planetarium in New York City. But as donors, we look at several facts before we make a decision to give any money. We ask, how far along is this project when we come into it? This project, as of December of 2000, had amazingly raised $43 million under the radar screen of a $63 million expansion. And Leonard and I said, this, this is going to happen. This exciting project is going to happen. So we decided to endow the Leonard Nimoy Event Horizon Theater, the first time the observatory has ever had a theater, other than the Laserium. And we quite honestly would like to see this happen in his lifetime, and he just turned 70 in March of this year. We also, we looked at what foundations, what individuals, what corporations, how much has the state given, and how much has the city given? Because we want to make sure that when we think of giving $1 million to a project, that it's going to actually happen. And what we discovered was that the city hadn't given any money towards the capital campaign. And so because we care passionately about this project, because we know how important it is for kids to have a place where they can learn about science, where they can learn about the universe, where we can inspire one imagination at a time, we believe that it is absolutely imperative for a city like Los Angeles that we have the best observatory that we can poss, that money can, can buy. So I, I can't encourage you enough to think about making a substantial contribution to this project. I know Leonard and I are working very actively, along with the brilliant people, Camille Lombardo, Executive Director of the Friends of the Observatory, Dr. Krupp, the Director of the Observatory. If any of you had an opportunity to meet him, you would feel as we felt, that had we had a teacher like this, we could have been scientists. We could have gone into space. He's an inspiring man. So we will continue to work tirelessly for this effort, and we hope you will give generously to this wonderful cultural icon. Thank you for letting me speak with you all. Good morning.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your significant help in making this real. Is there anybody else on any budget items? Because I am about to close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Now, the way we're going to proceed with this is we'll hear first from Mr. Fuhr as Chair of the committee, and then, as needed, from the staff. And we will go through the committee report page by page. You all remember that if it's, if there's not something changed by the committee, the budget will stay as proposed by the mayor. And if we have additional motions, those will come after we have gone through the committee report. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'll speak briefly so we can get into the details of the budget process. I want to begin, as we ended the ad hoc committee in the budget process, by thanking once more not only our colleagues on the committee, our Vice Chair, Ms. Walters, Ms. Mizakowski, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Hernandez, but also the chief legislative analyst staff, especially Ms. So for her continuing strong efforts, the CAOs, the Oars Office, pardon me, Mr. Fujioka, Mr. Hart, and team, the continued cooperation from the Mayor's Office. It was a very, very productive series of intensive hearings, which culminated in the changes to the proposed budget from the mayor that all of us have before us. I just want to highlight four or five meaningful changes that I would urge our colleagues to retain, along with the balance of what's before us. The committee increased the allocation for repairing sidewalks in the city by 50%. Recall, just a couple of years ago, the city wasn't doing any sidewalk repair. This continuing effort on the part of the committee, and I hope the council and the mayor together, will enable us to begin to rectify a problem that all our residents feel is very important to solve. The committee added money for our summer jobs program for our youth this summer. There had been otherwise no funds in the city budget allocated to a line that is not just some technical bureaucratic matter, colleagues. If youth in this city don't have meaningful activity in the heat of the summer, jobs, then they will turn to other activities in many cases. We, as city leaders, know that. We have an obligation to lead our kids in the right direction. The budget was also amended by the committee to increase code enforcement, an effort that all of us in the city think is crucial. There are so many laws in our city that simply aren't adequately enforced, and they contribute to a decline in neighborhood quality of life. The committee's purpose in adding personnel to this item was to assure that when members of the public contact the city, that they get those quality of life code enforcement issues responded to, and then, in fact, the city get ahead of the curve. We also built on a recommendation that was made by mayoral candidate Javier Becerra, which was that every student in the City of Los Angeles Elementary School be given a library card. Congressmember Becerra made a, I think, a very strong impression on a lot of people with that idea, and we wanted to adopt it and make it a policy here in the city. We also added planning staff, because all of us know how overwhelmed the planning department has been in trying to respond to both business, business and residential planning needs, and other things as well. But colleagues, the details are in the document before us. As our president has indicated, I recommend that we proceed page by page, simply calling matters special if people want to amend what's here, otherwise giving our acquiescence to it so we can get through this in short order. Madam President, I recommend we proceed to the first page.
Okay. Is there anybody, do you, do you want a presentation on these items?
No, I think we should proceed. Our, our colleagues, of course, have been apprised of this in advance, so we can move efficiently.
All right. This is, we have 21 pages, folks. So on page one, any specials, any adaptations? That's items one, two, and three. Okay, open the roll on items one, two, and three. That's why you had, you were supposed to be here earlier.
Madam President, I think Mr. Hernandez has a procedural question to ask.
Okay.
I just have a procedural question, because as, as Mr. Fuhr presented, we're ready to vote on the recommendations that are before us. But there was a, a Oars report, and then a CLA's report. Were all the things, basically the shortfalls and so forth, consolidated into the CLA's report, or is that a separate item?
Yes. Ms. So? Mr. Hernandez is asking if the Oars recommendations and reports were fully taken into account in the CLA's report.
I'm sorry, which item was that?
Because we're looking at the CL, we're looking at the CLA report right now. And there was an Oars report initially that basically talked about shortfalls and so forth, and additional funding that was found. Were those consolidated into your report, or are we looking at separate reports?
We used the information that was available up until the time that the committee acted, which was last Tuesday. We understand that Oars did issue a report on Friday that indicated that there were additional potential shortfalls in the current year. Our position is, with regard to the reserve fund, that the reserve fund is an estimate. It's always been an estimate. And historically, the reserve fund, by the time the books close in August, could be up or down.
Okay.
So our position is, is that we've taken everything that we've known up until Tuesday of last week, and as we progress into the upcoming fiscal year, we will address any other shortfalls that might.
Okay. Now, that, that's your recommendation. All I want to do is make sure, because you get all these reports.
Right.
So what we're voting on today is the CLA's report recommendations.
No, I believe it's the committee's.
It's the committee's recommendations.
And then the committee's recommendations that we adopted.
That's right.
And then there was a subsequent Oars report that we're not going to look at. That's the procedural question I'm asking.
You can look at anything you want, and you can ask questions about anything you want. What's, the matter that's before us on the agenda is the committee's report.
Okay, okay.
So, so the plan is to go through item by item in the committee's report.
Committee's report.
Call special anything anybody wants to discuss, and discuss it.
Right. And then if we want to address those shortfalls, we do that at the end.
Correct.
Right. Okay. So items one, two, and three. Any specials? Open the roll on items one, two, and three. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that gets us to page two. Items four through 12. Ms. Roth.
I, my understanding was that number 11 was a correction that the CLA was suggesting.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that needs to be called special?
Well, we recommend that 11 be received and filed.
That item 11, the carryover balance increase be received and filed. Okay, Mr. Fuhr, that's...
Indeed. No, that, there was, there was more information provided, and I understand that that's what we should do. So I will move that amendment to this. Items four through 12, with 11 being received and filed.
Okay. Any, any specials? Open the roll, four through 12, 11 noting that 11 is received and filed. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Nice going. Page three, 13 through 19. Any specials? I love it. Open the roll, 13 through 19. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Page four, 20 through 27. Any specials? I'm sorry?
26, unless I can make this quick, simple amendment right now.
Yeah, what's the amendment?
Just to request a report back on implementation to ITGS Committee. Second.
No problem. All right, 26 is amended. Yeah, I'm not up to 30 yet. Hold on, one more page. Items 20 through 27, with 26 as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Now, Mr. Hernandez, item 30.
No, I, I just again, and I'm trying to make sure I understand the process, but there was certain issues that we had discussed in committee that weren't reflected in the CLA's report. And I was just wondering, when would we introduce those issues? Because I thought it was introduced.
Okay. If there is, why don't we hold, which item are you referring to?
Well, under Cultural Affairs, I had talked about the Mills Act and a person who had worked those historic preservation agreements.
My, my recommendation would be, why don't we hold item 30 on the desk, call it special, allow you and the CLA to confirm we can come back.
Okay. Item 30 is now called special. Anything else on page five? 28, 29, 32, Mr. Wax, 28, Mr. Ridley Thomas, 30, Mr. Hernandez. That leaves 29, and 31, and 34. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Sir? If you must. Okay. Mr. Savornich has asked that item 14 be reconsidered and held on the side to get some questions answered. Any objection? Item 14 is now reconsidered.
Okay.
Okay, page six. Items 35 through 42. Any specials? Mr. Padilla, 42. Anybody else?
Item 39?
39, Mr. Hernandez. Anybody else? Going once. 35 through 38, 40, and 41. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Page seven, 43 through 51. Any specials? Okay, open the roll on 43 through 51. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. I know this can't last. Page eight, 52 through 56. It's not clear to me who's teasing whom here. 52 through 56. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Page nine, 57 through 61. This is why they gave it to us last week. 57 through 61. Any specials? Open the roll, 57 through 61. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Page 10. Items 62 through 70. Sorry, 62. Mr. Padilla calls 62. Anybody else? Mr. Wax, 65. Okay, that leaves 63, 64, and 66 through 70. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Page 11, 71 through 77. 71 through 77. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Page 12, 78 through 84. 78 through 84. 83. Alex, don't feel compelled to call everything special. 83, Mr. Padilla. Yeah, I know. He hasn't been through this as many times as the rest of us have. Okay, 78 through 82 and 84. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Okay. But this is so much fun. Okay, page 13, 85 through 90. Your government is here to serve you, and the check is in the mail. Yeah, okay, okay? 85, 85 through 90. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Page 14. Page 14. 91 through 96. There's a zero. Look at that. There's a whole bunch of zeros.
Zero.
Okay. We're ready. 91 through 96. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Page 15. More zeros. 97 through 101.
Conrad, we lost the list of specials.
I've got them here. We'll go back. Okay. 97 through 101. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Page 16. 102 through 110. These are instructions, authorizations, no numbers. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Those are approved.
Yeah, zero cost, right.
Page 17. 111 through 120. 111 through 120. More instructions and authorizations, and mostly instructions. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. They're all instructions.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Page 18. 121 through 125. Any specials? Okay. Open the roll on... We caught up here? Open the roll on 121 through 125. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Page 19. 126 through 129. Specials? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved, too. This is so exciting. Page 20. Items 130 through 137. We'll get to the closing recommendation, I think, separately.
Closing... Cultural Affairs.
No, let's do 138. There's a lot of closing recommendations. Okay. Page 20. 130 through 138. Open the roll, close the roll.
135.
Sorry, 135, Mr. Wax. Anybody else? See, I knew you could keep up, Joel. Okay. 130 through 134, and 136 through 138. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Page 21. Items 139 through 143. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. We now go...
Madam President, is it appropriate to ask that those matters go forth with, or is it premature?
I think it's probably still premature.
It was a rhetorical question.
Hang on. I know. Listen. Share your enthusiasm for that.
Yes.
All right. We're back to item 11. No, that was received and filed. Okay. 14. Mr. Savornich, are you...
We have staff here, don't worry.
Well, we have CLA and ORS. We're on item 14. Mr. Savornich has some questions.
It might be appropriate, Madam President, to continue to hold this on the desk until possibly we can have Bureau of Street Services personnel here.
Okay. We'll do that.
Can we make a request that they...
That they send somebody up?
Come to the council chamber?
We got somebody here?
Here. Here. Here comes the cavalry.
Okay. Mr. Savornich, would you push your speaker button, please? Okay, go.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, Mr. Scott, and good morning, staff. On item number 14, we have $2.8 million, which is being allocated, and if the budget... If Mr. Fujioka, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, that we are appropriating $2.8 million in unexpended carryover funds from this present year's budget to the traffic congestion relief program, and the money has come from money that we did not spend on our resurfacing program. Am I correct, or do I have that backwards?
That's correct.
Okay. So the question that I have is that one of the priorities this council has had for my tenure on the city council, and probably a few years before that from some of the other members, has been an increase in trying to improve the condition of streets in each of our respective neighborhoods. And I'd like to know why we were not able to spend this $2.8 million fixing streets, and why the decision has been made, rather than paving the streets, and appropriating this $2.8 million to traffic congestion relief. And whoever would like to dive on that grenade is more than welcome to.
Well, somebody's got to.
Would any of you like to buy a vowel?
Even if you wouldn't like to, you've got to do something here.
Well, I was basically wanting to hear that, you know, the money was transferred to next year to do those very same things. Basically, we hope to receive the TCRP approval this year in September. I believe we received it in February. So we made an estimate of how much we could do and how much we could spend. We revised that estimate for the Ad Hoc Budget Committee in terms of, we're going to finish the resurfacing miles that we committed to do. I don't think I can get all the concrete work, because I can't get enough finishers right now to complete that. But we will have them for next year. I can't get enough people, because there's not lists currently, to hire several of the people we need, like truck operators, et cetera. So we've stretched as far as we could. We're going to complete the miles, and this is money that would be carried over to next year again to do those same types of things.
Councilman, if I can add, I believe the department is going to expend all the money that was budgeted to them in their budget for the current year. What happened is, we were fortunate enough to receive about $28 million of additional funding from the state, and some of that additional money is the money that's going to roll over to next year and be spent on street improvements.
Okay. But, street improvements, as defined by me, is paving and resurfacing.
Exactly.
Street improvements, according to item 14, says traffic congestion relief. Are we defining street paving and slurring as traffic congestion relief?
Councilman, that's simply the name of the state funding, and I think that's why it's been labeled that way. TCRP is actually the way the state identifies the funds. It is used, however, for street resurfacing, as you've described.
Terrific. So we are not allocating any less money for street surfacing. We're allowing this... Appropriating the same or more?
Correct.
That's what we wanted to hear. Thank you. We can proceed, Madam President.
Ms. Zakowski.
I don't need to speak. I was going to say the same thing, that it really... It looked like we were decreasing funding. In fact, we are rolling it over and increasing, and I think it is something that was important, and the committee spent a lot of time on it, increasing that even from what the mayor had to do. The mayor did a very good job in increasing it in his budget, and I think we looked and tried to see if we could get even more, and particularly related to the sidewalk repair.
Mr. Hernandez.
Again, I have no problems with the amount being allocated, but I just wanted to ask, and one of my concerns, members of the councils, every year we discuss street maintenance as a high priority budget item, besides police and fire. And every year, the department maps out a strategy to keep our streets moving. In doing that strategy, every year there are streets they can't get to because there are utility holes. And even though they might say they're doing so many miles, the reality is they can't do so many miles because of utility holes, and then we work on trying to get replacement streets with the department and so forth. The question I'm asking is, when was the last time we audited how much work street maintenance has actually done with the budgets that we've allocated to them? And the reason I'm asking the question, I think the Finance Department will be part of their role, or the new controllers, part of their role.
Mr. Hernandez, on your time, if I might, and correct me if I'm wrong, I actually asked that question in Budget and Finance, and we got a report that showed that about 5/6 of the way through the year, they had expended about 5/6 of the money, and then about 5/6 of the work. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, because we are... It's a good question. We were concerned about the same thing, and they're on track this year to do it.
Right. But in my district, you're not at about 5/6. You're about 50 percent because of utility holes.
By the end of the fiscal year, we'll have completed all the miles in your district, and we hope to complete all the miles in every district. There's some miles that will start this year that won't be completed until the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Okay.
But we will get all of our miles, and it should be all the miles in every council district.
Okay. And that's not been my experience in the past, when we've gone over it and over it. So I'm just kind of explaining it, because that's why I was asking. Now, and that's based on... Whose report? Your reports?
That's based on what we turn in, basically, every week, and our reports, and then we're audited, as you know, every year, with all the special funding that we do, and the miles that we do. So we get an audit every year, basically, on what we do, and...
But you get an audit on the city funds every year? The city that we... The monies we spend?
Right. Because most of them are either gas tax funds, or they're TCRP funds, or they're SDP funds. They're all funds that you get, basically, audited on.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Something did catch my ear that our Director of Street Services mentioned. Mr. Scott, do we have enough personnel to complete the tasks that the council and the Ad Hoc Budget Committee has requested to get these streets done, and to get these curbs done, and to get these sidewalks done? I know that in our private conversations over the course of the past many years, that we did not have, for example, a curb crew anymore, that didn't come... We don't have one that comes out and pours the concrete for the curbs, and I believe that we were short on some of the alley crews. So we could be trying to do all the right things here in regards to appropriating money in the budget for the programs, but if we don't have the personnel to do the work, then it makes no difference. Were some of those issues discussed by the Budget Committee in regards to the personnel that actually do the work, for example, like the curb crews?
Yes. We discussed how many we could possibly bring on, and what period of time, what our time lags are, what we've been able to do this year in moving crews from one area to another to cover the gaps, holding back salvage equipment, getting people from hiring halls. We discussed all of those issues. It's always difficult, but we always manage to get it done. So if we're funded to do a program, we will take care of that program.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on item 14? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is now approved, and we go to item 28. Mr. Ridley... Yes, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Hey, Greg.
You called item 28 special?
I did, Madam President.
Could you hit your speaker button, please?
I'll be glad to.
Thank you. Go ahead.
A relatively minor item in this regard. We've learned that the capacity to move specifically in the context of summer may be more challenging than what had been previously anticipated. Mr. Hernandez, as well as Mr. Padilla and myself, agree that the better way to characterize this, to accommodate the students who we intend to accomplish, is off-track. That includes the work that needs to happen during the summer. Mr. Padilla additionally requests that we have a report back to CDD as it relates to implementation. With that, Mr. Fuhr, Madam President, I would so move.
Yeah. Madam President, I wish you'd just accept Mr. Ridley Thomas's notions as friendly amendments to the committee's action. I just want to emphasize, colleagues, that this is a really important step for the council to take. We need to be not merely giving lip service to the importance of treating our kids as though we really care about them. This line item really does that. I urge unanimous support.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of council, I also rise to support this, but in conjunction with Mr. Ridley Thomas's statement, this is May 21, and when we talk about the Summer Youth Program, the department might not be able to get it all off by the beginning of the summer. The reality of Los Angeles has been that we're a system that's year-round when it comes to schools. And our reality is that we have youth that are looking for employment opportunities year-round. And so to basically move the money, I think, is extremely important, to give the department the instruction to begin the program, to work on the program and develop the program, and then have a clear understanding that it might not be limited to just the Summer Youth Program. It might have to go beyond that. It's part of what I think we all understand, and we'd like to basically make sure that we have some opportunities for youth out there, and that the city's participating in those opportunities. Including with this funding, we won't be at where we were four years ago. We used to hire about 15,000 youth in the Summer Youth Program, and that was mostly federally-funded. Now we're down to about, with this funding, the opportunity to probably put together about 5,000 jobs for young people. 3,000 of those jobs coming from the perspective of other funding that has real limitations as to what kind of youth can be hired for those jobs. And 500 coming from a city-sponsored program that the private sector participates with us, that was introduced by the mayor. So again, the opportunities for youth are very limited, and I just urge that we move forward, and at some point, we've got to stop calling it a Summer Youth Program, because that reality is not part of Los Angeles.
Okay. Open the roll on item 28. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. That's approved. Item 30, called special by Mr. Hernandez. We were holding this...
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Want to keep holding it?
As I understand the process, no. I don't mind us voting on item 30 at this time with a clear understanding, a motion will be coming in. The Ad Hoc Committee had discussed with Cultural Affairs a position for the Mills Act. And the Mills Act, basically, there's paperwork that has to go whenever preservation is applied, and the city has to apply itself to providing services, and we've had a part-time person and a huge backlog. And what it means is, the benefit that property owners get for working on historic homes and preserving their homes according to standards at the national level, they don't get the tax benefit until the city completes the work. And so when ORS reported back, they had reported back that the position was warranted, it would be a $51,000 cost, but for some reason, it was not part of the last report. And so, understanding the process much clearer now, I'd like us to vote on item 30, get that out of the way, and then a motion will be brought in to include that as part of what originally was recommended by ORS.
Okay. Good. Okay, good, thank you. Let's open the roll on item 30, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. We will be, what we will be doing is taking up all motions that anybody has to supplement or alter this after we've gone through all of these specials. So the next one, I believe, is item 32, Mr. Wax. You called that one special. Would you mind hitting your speaker button?
I'm in there.
Did you hit the speaker button?
Did you?
Thank you.
Is there a reason why this was not in the mayor's budget?
Where is Fire Station 9? I don't even have any idea.
Councilman, the reason why it wasn't, it was a priority. But basically, what we did is we worked closely with the fire department to fund their highest priorities, which in the current year was adding a paramedic resource as each of the 102 fire stations.
Which I support strongly.
Right. So basically, what we did was, we addressed that issue before addressing this issue.
Okay, but this issue, what is this issue in terms of this particular fire station vis-à-vis this issue in all fire stations? I mean, what's, what is unique about this? I'm curious.
I think the fire department should address that issue.
Yeah, I'd like to hear-
We have somebody here-
I'd like the fire department to tell me.
Councilman, this particular fire station, it is one of the busiest stations in the city. Basically, it's indicated that, on the average, for engine companies, there's a 222 responses per engine company. This particular station, there's 520 responses. With regard to ambulances, it was indicated that, on the average, there are about 305 runs by ambulances citywide. And then, in this particular station, there's about 458 responses. So there's some stations-
But the issue, the issue isn't how many responses. The issue is the time and the quality of the response, which depends partly upon the, upon the staffing that they have. I'm trying to analyze whether the results from this station are poorer than the results from other stations to require the special attention.
It's mainly because if you have a lot of responses coming out of that station, it takes that ambulance or it takes that engine company out of service. So by putting in overtime to add an extra engine company, an extra ambulance there, it actually improves the response.
I understand that. My question is, under the current staffing, is this station performing poorer than others in their ability to respond to calls?
I wouldn't say it's poorer. What I would say is that it's busier because of the number-
That's not the point. The point isn't busy, the point is the quality of response. If there's a fire or you need an ambulance, you make a call, you get a certain quality of response. Hopefully, there's a uniform quality of response citywide. And that, that will, in part, be determined by the calls and the number of responses. It'll part be determined by the personnel and equipment available to respond to them. I'm, I'm trying to find out whether the response times and the quality of service at this station has been, has been lesser than in other ones. If it hasn't been, then there has to be some other reason why you single out one station. I'd like to know the answer.
If I might on your time, Madam President, why don't we hold this item until the fire department can be available to speak to the issue and then return to it? Because I think that the quality of this discussion would be enhanced without-
I think it needs, absolutely must have the fire department here.
Okay, now I have both Ms. Mozakowski and Mr. Hernandez. Is it okay with you if we hold it? We'll just hold it. All right, let's go to item 39. Item 39 called special by Mr. Hernandez. Need your speaker button, please?
Yep. And Madam Chair, again, I'll be bringing in a motion. When we transferred staff because of the City Hall work in terms of the fleet workers, we sent most of our two fleet attendants over to, I guess it's Figueroa Street, because they were working on the motor pool there. Now that we're bringing staff, we're transferring staff back, but the two staff people that deal with the motor pool are going to stay on Figueroa. And so they would need two staff people to deal with the motor pool at City Hall. And I see Mr. Fujiwaka kind of nodding. So I'll be bringing in a motion to do that. The reason I'm introducing these issues is because I know that budget finance is going to reveal them again. But I wanted to explain that I thought that that was part of the original transfer. And I, that's why, when I was sitting at Ad Hoc, I thought that that was included, and that wasn't.
So you will have a motion, so we can adopt item 39-
Right.
We'll have another motion.
And my understanding, it doesn't increase, but it does come out of a reserve fund, but it could be absorbed by the department, so we'll be-
Always a better solution. Okay, open the roll on item 39. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved. Which brings us to item 42, called special by Mr. Padilla. Speaker button, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. This won't be long. Just a comment and possible report request. During the Ad Hoc, I think there was unanimous support for this item. One of the questions and issues was raised is with new technologies, whether it's the magnetic stripe behind the cards or a barcode reader. I think that's what the library department runs on. We know that other departments in the city are trying to incorporate some of that technology and card type of use as well, whether it's recreation in parks, some of the senior centers, et cetera. So this is just looking forward into the future, maybe a couple of years, if instead of having 15 different departments with 15 different systems of little cards that are either magnetic stripe or barcode or what have you, if it makes sense to start planning ahead of time for a consistent technology to be utilized where people, residents of the city, have just a city card. That is your library card, it is your wrecking parks registration card, it is your, same thing for various departments, as opposed to having your wallet with 15 different types of city of LA cards in it. So maybe staff can help out here on how we can pursue that, maybe beginning with a survey of all the departments of which ones have some sort of electronic card sort of project in place or are looking to implement one over the next year.
Mr. Padilla. Mr. Padilla also raised this issue in the committee. It's a good idea, an important one to pursue. I'd recommend that we direct that there be reports from CLA's office and ORS to the ITGS Committee within, choose the period of time, so we don't let the idea die, but rather pursue it vigorously, perhaps within four weeks.
That, that sounds fine. I'll second that.
Yeah, why don't we incorporate that into this?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, everybody got that? So we're asking on item 42, we're asking for a report back from the CLA and the CIO, sorry, ORS, to, to the ITGS Committee on combining all this stuff. Open the roll on 42 as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved, as amended. We jump now to item 62, also called special by Mr. Padilla.
Now push my speaker button.
Yes, I saw that, thank you. You learned fast.
Also, just a quick request of the department, whether or not they're here. The department does a fairly good job of notifying the council offices of street repair work, which streets are going to be impacted and when they're going to be impacted, usually with a week or two of lead time. That helps us deal with constituents when they wonder what's going on or really, why they can no longer park in front of their home. So the request as an amendment to this item is that the department report back to committee on how we can implement a similar notification system for sidewalk repair work. I, I hear a lot of this from my own district staff members. I reminded them that last year was the first time in several years that we had a dedicated sidewalk repair program, and now we've tripled it from last year to this year. So I would only imagine that those same questions from constituents are going to increase. So the motion I'd like to make is to amend this item, requesting the department to report back to committee on the implementation and detail of a notification system for council offices.
Okay, so we've amended this to include a report. Do we need any further comment? Okay. Open the roll on item 62 as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved. Item 65, called special by Mr. Wax.
Do we have an identification of these projects?
Sharon, we have them specifically delineated. Can you find them for Mr. Wax?
Uh, yes.
Should we hold this on the desk, Madam President, while those are being identified?
Well, let's do that. I think we have only two more before we start going back to the things on the desk. But let's hold, hold that on the desk, and we'll jump, while you're looking for that, we will jump to item 83, called special by Mr. Padilla.
And I believe the last of my specials.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Also, wanted to speak in support of this item, but ask that it technically be amended to read that the, in item 83A, the transfer of $400,000 in contingency funds to the unappropriated balance amended to read 400,000 in contingency funds and Phase 1 of the customer service request system. I believe the dialogue within the Ad Hoc Committee was to put it in the unappropriated balance in case of a need of contingency, if the contingency was not necessary to make these funds available for the customer service request system Phase 1, which is the next step in the overall 301E government project.
Let that be an amendment that is accepted and rolled into the committee report.
Okay. Okay?
Thank you.
Good job. Open the roll on 83 as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved, which brings us to 135, and then we'll go back to the, whatever's still on the desk. Item 135 was called special by Mr. Wax.
What happens to the first 20 million?
Somebody at the table going to answer this question? Hello at the center table? Go ahead.
Councilman, of the $20 million that's anticipated, $5 million is being put into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. $5 million is being used to replace taps, and $10 million is using, being used for business tax relief.
For what?
Business tax relief.
Business tax relief?
Yes.
And then after that, 75% for business tax reform.
Joel, it maintains the same apportionment as the council's already approved for the-
And do you have a, a clear way of, of determining what funds are actually amnesty funds?
I believe the Department of Finance, the Office of Finance will, in fact, be able to segregate those funds, because it is happening at a certain point in time. So there'll be a way to differentiate that from the normal business tax remittance.
I think that's really an important thing to do. Otherwise, you may have unintended consequences.
And Joel, for what it's worth, under the auspices of the Ad Hoc Committee on Tax Reform, from which a lot of these ideas come, there'll be continuing effort, both during my tenure and whoever replaces me on that committee, to do the same.
Okay, ready to vote? Item 135. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved. Now we are holding on the desk, item-
Fire and traffic.
Okay, do we have the fire department? I see the fire department. Step this way. That was, I believe, item 32. Morning. Okay, Mr. Wax, you were on.
Yeah, I was just wondering why we had singled out one station. I didn't even know where it was at the time. Singled out one station for an additional $1.5 million for work-related relief, when, is that station performing noticeably poorer than all the others? Is the response time less at that station now than it is at the others?
Captain Wells with the fire department. It's not a matter of response time or what the customer gets. This is far, this is a trial program to handle the workload of those employees that are at the station, which is by far the busiest station in the city.
I don't understand that. It seems to me, I don't understand. I realize that some stations have far more requests for service than others. They usually have a commensurate amount, more personnel, so that the end result is a uniform desired response time. And obviously, if you have more responses, you're going to have more work, and you're going to need more equipment and more people to handle it in order to produce the kind of response time that you set as your goal. My question really is, has this one been performing as well as others with respect to response times?
Yes, it has.
And quality of service?
Yes.
So if it has been, then why, I don't quite then understand if it's been responding as well as, if it's been performing as well as others with respects to response time and quality of service, why would it then need additional resources that all the others aren't getting? Isn't it better to divide those resources to improve the quality of service a little bit at all of them? Why pick out one at this level? I'm just curious.
This is a station where the demand for service is far greater than any other community in the city. The stations and the units at that station and the surrounding stations are able to cover all the calls and keep the response times down below the minimum. But because the workload is so busy in this one district, this is a trial program without adding budgeted authorized positions-
Complete the set.
It's for overtime to put in more resources.
Because the workload is so, much greater at this, what follows from that?
The workload of the resources that are there, that they're going on so many calls, they're not always available for the next run to come in. It would reduce the response time even more, but the stations around Station 9 are able to keep the response times to a minimum.
I noticed your request originally for this $1.5 million was for, for three of the department's busiest fire stations. You wanted to spend $1.5 million. How come you're now choosing to put the whole $1.5 million into one?
It was more than that. I believe our initial request was for a little over $3 million for the three stations.
No, it was a $1.5 million. It said the goal of the work relief program is to provide workload relief for three of the, three of the department's busiest stations, and it had $1.5 million.
This was equivalent to hiring five extra personnel each day to staff an extra engine and an extra ambulance. By putting in those two new resources, the response times would be decreased even more.
Look, I am one who always votes for more resources for the fire department to better do its job. I have no problem with spending the money on that, because that's one of the highest priorities there is in government expenditures. But I'm sensing something is more, there's something more here, and I'm not quite getting the answer. There's got to be a reason why this one got singled out, if in fact it is not performing at a, you know, in any, in any way, in a lesser way than all the others do. I'm going to listen to the rest of this. I think some other people have some questions, but I just know that there's more than meets the eye here.
Ms. Mozakowski.
Thank you. Mr. Wax, from the memo that I had on May 6th that was part of Ad Hoc Budget, it talked about 1.5 million in variable staffing for just this station. And I think one of the things that they're not saying, but which prompted the Ad Hoc Budget Committee to deal with this, as we looked at the whole paramedic issue earlier and the need to hire more paramedics, we heard overall the question of need for relief, for fatigue, for stress, for, and that was commensurate with those paramedics, which were being called out at a higher frequency. So they may get out as often as they can and get out and have backup coverage from the other stations. But when this station is essentially constantly on call, it creates a fatigue factor for those who are being called out. And this experiment here to create a variable relief, having another, you said, you presumed that when there were more calls, there would be more people and more equipment to handle those calls. That's not the case. They still have one unit that just gets that higher dependency on calls. They get, the only relief they get is from the other stations nearby. So this was an attempt, and when you really look at those numbers, the average call is 300 or so citywide. This is 520. That means those same people, they don't get any downtime. And if you've been to the fire stations, you know that there's, you know, that there's time that hopefully they do get relief. This is an attempt to give those people at that high station here downtown the relief and see if that works in, one, creating stability in the people who are assigned there as opposed to people who are there and are for very short s- since because they get transferred out because of the workload. So it's really, it was really the fatigue.
Does the converse then hold that there are stations that are really overstaffed in a sense, but you have to be done in order to provide a minimum level of service?
Yeah, because distance and time, they have to be allocated throughout the city. And again, there's no question that among firefighters and probably paramedics as well, there are some stations that are a better assignment for reasons of perhaps having fewer calls.
Well, that's a very valid reason.
I might add too, that that station-
It would be good to spread it out and try to do it for more.
Exactly. This will give us the opportunity to spread that workload out amongst the people assigned, so they'll have time to do more training, apparatus maintenance. They have, that station traditionally has probationary firefighters. It gives the officers more time to spend in training with those probationary firefighters.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of council, one, I'm glad Mr. Wax was asking the questions, but one day I'm going to invite you to a press conference at Fire Station 11 with me. And the reason I'm going to do that is, I remember doing one of my first press conferences there, and the reality was, we had a difficult time because the fire trucks kept on leaving and the paramedics kept on leaving. And I found out that, at that time, Fire Station 11 was one of the busiest fire stations in the entire nation. Now, the only one that beats Fire Station 11 every now and then is Fire Station 9. And when you look at the list of three, the second on the list was Fire Station 11. I'm sharing it with you because I have had opportunity to have lunch at several of my fire stations. The problem is, when I had lunch at Fire Station 11, I was almost eating by myself. The chief was with me. And it's because they're so busy, and their paramedics are responding to rape calls, they're responding to crime. They're, in many cases, being at places before the police get there. But the reality is, those firefighters who work at those locations don't have the time to do some of the other things that firefighters do at other stations. And when you did your audit on the government efficiency of work, of building inspections for safety, the two stations that stood out, that basically we were doing no, and we had to provide additional funding to create a task force to catch up, were 9 and 11. Because those firefighters did not have time to do any of the other work. And when you talk about the fatigue factor, now, I supported this motion because I clearly understood the workload of Fire Station 9, because I understand the workload of Fire Station 11. And I'm hoping that this demonstration proves that it can increase the quality of all the service that is provided by a fire station, and hopefully Fire Station 11 will be the next one funded. My understanding is the third fire station is one out in Van Nuys. But it's strictly based on the kind of work that they have to do on a daily basis versus the kind of work that other fire stations have to do on a daily basis. But these firefighters are on constant move, and I think that's why they want us to try this and see how that works in providing those additional resources. I just kind of wanted to reflect that, because firefighters do more than just respond to fires. They sleep, they eat, and they also have to be able to deal with other things about inspecting buildings and so forth.
Mr. Wax?
I think that's very valid, these are very valid considerations. And my hope is that if it's valid at one, it's valid at others to the degree it occurs, and that in this coming year, you're going to make a more, a broader analysis of the, of this problem at a variety of stations. And it may not, each of them may not require the same, same level of response in order to deal with it, but it can- But it can't be an all or nothing situation where one is just overburdened and the others aren't having problems. So it would be wise to sort of take a look at the broader problem and the proportionate amount of resources it would need to, in effect, have a comparable impact on all the personnel. So hopefully you will be, will you be, can we ask that you respond back to the Public Safety Committee perhaps quarterly on, on the effect of, of the additional staffing and how you see it, what effect it's having and what analysis you're doing as you go along towards looking at the problem in it, at other stations as well?
Let the committee report reflect that.
Okay, item thirty-two is amended to include the report. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, thank you for coming. I think that helped clarify something for all of us here. We are now back to item sixty-five, and you are going to get the list of projects. But we just lost Mr. Wax. Mr. Wax? I know, but we're just up to your item. I'll save you lunch, I promise. Item sixty-five, you wanted the list of projects?
Yeah, we have them.
Yes, Mr. Wax, the...
Well, hold on, your mic's not on. Go ahead.
The schedule that provided by Transportation is there are four projects under evaluation in Baldwin Hills. There is one project at the Earl Mar Traffic Circle, three projects in Encino Hills, two projects at Roscomer Road, and there are a few other projects that they're, they will be doing within existing funds, including Fisk Avenue, Mar Vista Palms, and Bienvenida Avenue near Sunset.
Is there someone here from traffic as to just what a neighborhood traffic management program consists of? Ms. Banerjee's here?
Good morning, council members. Frances Banerjee, Department of Transportation. Last year in the budget, the council set up the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. There are about seventeen communities that the staff is working with throughout the city. What this has done, and this is, we felt, a really sensible approach to budgeting, was when we had projects that we'd been working on for long periods of time with the community that were coming close to resolution, but we really weren't there yet, that funds would be put in the CIEP so that during this next year, as particularly between now and the, and the interim budget, we would be able to go ahead and implement them as they came to agreement. Many of these projects are still work in progress.
Would Laurel Canyon, say, in Studio City, Mr. Furze in my district be an example of this type of...
As we're working with the community and we approach consensus on the project. And so really, these are things that were really just about, just about to consensus.
Okay, and this is separate from, say, the Central Business District...
Absolutely.
...project that we had in committee recently?
Yes.
That's a different type of program?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item sixty-five, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved. All right, that brings us to the end of this run-through. But don't get too excited because the motions are in fact coming in. So we're going to declare a thirteen-minute break until twelve fifteen. For those of us who have not been able to get to the lunch, nobody, you can go too. Nobody is to leave that back door. We'll never get a quorum back here. At the end of that time, you may bring your lunch back in. At the end of that time, we are going to take up the supplemental motions which are being prepared even as we speak. So we are in recess until twelve fifteen. Okay, here we go. So our procedure, Mr. Deaton, you'll coach me if I'm wrong? We did, yeah, we did sixty-five.
Okay, fine. We'll go motion by motion. Actually, the approach is to have the author of the motion explain its importance.
Okay. Okay, do we have, all right, is Mr. Fuhr here? There you are, okay. Your motion is up first, so. So we're about to go through items so far. We have items one through nine.
Madam President.
Item one, go ahead.
Madam President, colleagues, item one is a motion related to general services, which I would ask be directed to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, anybody else? The motion is to send number one to committee. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that goes to committee.
Thank you. Madam President, item two is a motion which I would ask go to the Public Works and Budget and Finance Committees.
Okay, is Ms. Chick here? Ms. Chick here?
Out of deference to our colleague, we can hold that item until she arrives.
Is she comfortable? Do you know if she...
I do not know.
Okay, let's hold item two.
I believe she introduced that at the behest of our colleague, Mr. Burnson, who's ill today. But I'm not positive because the...
Okay, I'm being signaled it's okay. So the motion would be that, motion number two, go to Public Works and Budget and Finance. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item three, Mr. Padilla.
Item three, I would also move be directed to the Budget and Finance Committee. And actually, you know what? I guess it should go to the ITGS Committee and then to Budget, correct, Mr. Padilla? All right.
Okay, ITGS and Budget. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
It is on its way.
Item four, and again, I'd ask some help from Ms. Chick's staff, who, but I believe the case of item four is that that also would go to the Government Efficiency and Budget and Finance Committees.
Actually, I think this one was inadvertently not included in...
There are a few motions like that, colleagues, where there were matters that should have been included that have to be amend, we have to amend the report with now. Is this, this is one of them?
I believe so.
All right.
And should be included in Budget.
So you're recommending that we approve this?
This should be approved.
All right. Ms. Chick, we're on item four, which I would, for which I would move approval as you get your breath back.
You can either approve it today or wait for the new comptroller to request it July first.
Let's just get it over with. We're on such a roll here.
While the new comptroller can bank on a vote from the third council district, let's do it today.
Yeah, okay. All right, open the roll on approving item four as part of the committee report. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved.
Okay. Madam President, item five is the motion to which Mr. Hernandez referred earlier. I don't have enough information on this item to make a recommendation as I stand here. Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Deaton, no more.
Mr. Hernandez undoubtedly will.
Yeah, members of the council, we had basically asked Oars to report on this item in committee to the Budget Ad Hoc Committee, and then the report back. This was dealing with the Mills Act and the preservations of the fact that there was only a part-time staff person working on cultural affairs, and they had a huge backlog. At that time, the committee recommended, based on Oars' report, that it be adopted as part of the budget.
I think we should just approve it.
All right. That's, I remember the conversation. I believe this was inadvertently omitted. Madam President, I'd so move.
Okay. Open the roll on incorporating motion number five into the committee report. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Who'd we lose? Mr. Pacheco. Okay, that's approved.
Madam President, item six is a motion to direct funds for the ADA compliance at a pool in Mr. Holden's district. I would move that, as with the prior matters, that this matter be directed to Ms. Walters' Committee, ourselves in Humanities, and the Budget and Finance Committee.
Mr. Holden.
On the motion, they're in the process right now, or the rehab in that pool is shut down, and I can't think of a better time to, to be in compliance with ADA requirements than at the same time that they're already making these repairs. It makes no sense to make the repairs as required, then come back and disrupt the pool operations again by putting in an ADA. That just makes no sense.
Madam President, I have an idea on this one.
Yes.
Because at this point, all we have is, is the one-sentence motion. Why don't we hold this on the desk? We can have Wrexham Parks report to us on the status of this at the conclusion of the hearing and make a determination. Or in fact, lo and behold, like magic...
Let's have her do it now.
Yeah.
I don't think you ought to ask that question. Go ahead.
Ms. Oppenheim, the president has a sharp tongue this morning, so be careful.
Good morning, I'll try to be brief. We agree with the importance of the ADA renovations in that facility. It will be necessary, however, to do the design and the construction drawings before we're able to implement the construction. So it won't be possible to do the construction starting right away, which is when the current HVAC work is going on. But we'd be happy to start the design.
One of you set aside for the purpose that you'd be able to do it at the time when the design is completed. And this is like off-the-shelf design anyway for ADA, ramps, et cetera, et cetera. So I think your position should be stronger than mine as it relates to making this design change and being compliant with ADA. I can't think of why we're not forming at the mouth on this one.
We certainly would be happy to move ahead with the ADA improvements. Are we legally allowed to open the pool if it's not ADA compliant?
It's four to five weeks, it can be closed, so let's get moving.
Madam President, on this, I, let me make a suggestion again, the first suggestion having responded to so quickly by Ms. Oppenheim. I think it's important that we, the design tells us how much the cost will be. The design has to incorporate ADA compliance or it won't work. Do we know whether there are, and you're still designing, so we don't know how much funding is available relative to the design, correct?
We don't have the design funds for the ADA work. We need the design funds.
Okay, now...
That's the first part of that.
All right. Now, how much money is necessary for the design of the ADA compliance that you don't have currently?
I believe the design would probably be in the neighborhood of not more than $30,000.
Okay. The motion is for $200,000, but $30,000 is what's necessary at most for the ADA compliance portion of the design, correct?
Madam President, you have, are we monitoring the speaker's list?
Yes, we are, but Mr. Fuhr is the committee chairman, and I have three more people who wish...
Madam President, I would happily defer to my colleague from the Eighth Council District.
No, no, not yet, not yet.
When it's his turn.
Mr. Hernandez, well, Mr. Holden, were you finished?
We're praying for your deliverance, Mr. Fuhr.
They're doing the toilets, the water, pool to pool, and the ADA compliance. It's, we've done that on the curbs, cuts, the ramps are standardized. It's an off-the-shelf type design procedure, and to delay it is to not do it at all. Then they'll come back and cite you for not being compliant with ADA. So I would just say, in order to save time and money down the road, you do it the same time concurrently, at the same time. Mr. Thomas, I'm at Thomas.
No, no, wait, hold on.
He said on his time.
Oh, on your time?
Yes. Did you not, the relevance of this, I think, Madam President, members of the council, happens to be that you have the exposition park pool closed, as well as the Hartford Park pool closed, and what this effectively means if, is if Rancho La Cienega is closed, Celeste King, you don't have services. Therefore, it is imperative, I would think, pursuant to Mr. Holden's motion, to do this. I would second it.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I don't want us to lose sight of the target, and the target is to make sure our facilities are functioning according to all standards as quickly as possible. And when I say that, we as a city have developed a history of not being able to get our projects done on a timely manner. And I use the word timely because the federal government is reviewing our block grant expenditure program and the fact that many of our projects that are under block grant aren't moving fast enough. And I'm hoping everybody listens to me because I think that a lot of this is going to end up in that pool. And so one of the recommendations I wanted to make, because Wrexham Parks and the CLA's office has not been shy of looking at the block grant to supplement a lot of the Prop K projects and a lot of our construction projects that can be proven to be moved. And when they were talking about the list of committees they'd like this to go to, I noticed they admitted CED. I think that this project should proceed as fast as possible and that we basically also direct this to the Community Economic Development Committee timeliness report to try and get the funding and move it. The timeliness report is an ongoing process of priorities as to how we spend the money, but we continue to receive letters from the federal government telling us we're not spending it fast enough. And it's in the area of construction that the money's not moving. And we started a juggling game that is favoring, I think, Wrexham Parks, but Wrexham Parks has to be able to prove they can move that money. And so if something's not in design, it has to be in design, it has to go through a process, and Wrexham Parks needs to know it can do that. And right now, again, I'm saying, let's move it along. I would also recommend that the timeliness report review this project and make sure that the funding's there, but there should be no hesitancy on Wrexham Parks' part to include the ADA compliance requirements about, for this pool and to try and do it as fast as possible. I think that the funding will be there through one of these committees. But this sounds like the kind of project the block grant could definitely look at to move as soon as possible.
Ms. Mozakowski.
That was going to be my comment, that I think that it's appropriate to send this one to committee only for the purposes of finding the appropriate place for the money. If it's ready to go, and particularly if you say it's off-the-shelf kind of design and the pool is ready to be done, then this should be incorporated in it and that should be part of the contract. But let's make sure that we have community block grant funds potentially available, particularly from a project that might not be ready. So I think sending this to committee and whatever appropriate committee quickly to have come back, but with a clear intent that this is something that needs to be funded. Members of the council, we all have our list of projects like this. I also have a pool that we're ready to start, may not have all its fundings, but we've got to be very, very cognizant of moving cautiously but realistically with Wrexham Parks to get done what needs to be, get done, and make sure that the budgeting is there for those projects that are ready to go forward. So I think that sending this to committee, not for the purposes of delaying it or not causing it to happen, to causing it to come from the right appropriation area, makes the most sense, and that's what I would recommend.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Madam President, as you will be pleased to know, I spoke on someone else's time.
I did notice that. I'm glad you noticed it too, and I'm sure he did. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I tried to speak on Mr. Lee-Thomas's time, so, look, here's, here's the deal. I just asked Ms. Oppenheim, on an expedited basis, how quickly could the design be done? If we sped it up as fast as possible, and Ms. Oppenheim indicated that could be about four months of time for the design part of this on an expedited basis. I'm going to actually make a different recommendation than what's before us so far. I'm going to recommend that we add, how much money is necessary for the design on the ADAP? About $30,000?
Thirty thousand.
Okay. I can recommend so the design can move forward properly, that we add $30,000... I can recommend, so the design can move forward properly, that we add $30,000 for the design, send the matter, approve that now, so that there's no doubt that the design moves forward as fast as possible. Send the balance to committee for the purpose of finding a funding source and moving the balance of the project forward, because there's currently no funding for the actual construction for this fiscal year. So that'd be my motion. I hope there's a second for that. And we give Mr. Holden the opportunity to move this project forward as fast as we can by designing it in a timely way.
Mr. Holden.
I'm totally confused. I made it seventh, a memo from Ms. Oppenheim, to the Ad Hoc Committee on the Budget, suggesting that the money be put in this budget for this purpose. Did you read this?
Yes, sir. It could be accomplished in the, in the fiscal year, but we don't have a.
No, I didn't say about no fiscal year. This fiscal year, yeah, same thing, but you're saying it should be done at the same time that the other these constructions underway. That's your suggestion here, number one. Number two, it is standard procedure. The law is clear on this issue. When you make some substantial modification, you trigger the requirement to be in compliance with ADA. Now, I don't understand what you guys are talking about. You're either gonna do it or you're not doing it. You can be required by law to do it. If you don't do it, I'll sue you.
I may have to defend you, so.
Well, go ahead and defend it. First things first. First things first. We may have to hire you as an outside attorney.
He'll make more money that way.
That's okay, but that's not his first preference.
Between May 7th and now, we've moved ahead with the in-house project that's making the ventilation improvements that are required in that site.
Well, before you, let me, before you came here, that pool was shut down because the pool was leaking old pipes and plumbing for about two years. The people in that area was very upset. They blamed me, not the department. Mark took a lot of heat for it. The pool at exposition park, they had a problem with that one as well. But before we could get the money with Mr. Hernandez helping support, and then get the design done, it was about three years before it opened up again. We don't need to be keep playing around in the summertime with that pool. The fact of the matter is that if the federal government comes in and say you're not in compliance, they cut off all your other money as well also, and I'll help them to do that. I made a threat like that, and I kept it when we withheld, how many million was that from, from the, $30 million from the airport, which was not in compliance with federal law? And I said, you're making a mistake, you can't do that. They did it anyway, 14 to one vote, and the feds shut them down on all of your transportation. They shut them down on all the other money that's supposed to come in, and they lost, they've never recovered from that. I mean, you, you're not power drunk around here. You gotta take, 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 take advantage of this opportunity to make this pool open to people who do have disabilities. And you should be at the forefront saying, let's do it and do it now. That's what your memo would suggest. I think we ought to just says, okay, fine. We're gonna be in compliance, we're gonna put the $30,000 for the design, and when the design is complete, we're gonna appropriate the money to, 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 to implement those constructions with no hesitation.
I think, I think that's what Mr. Fuhrer's motion basically does.
My, so, again, my, my motion, which was so graciously accepted by our colleague, Mr. Holden, and seconded by about half the city council, was that we allocate $30,000 for the design, direct the department to expedite the design, and then return to the relevant city council committees with the design and cost estimates that arise from that design during the next fiscal year.
And in the meantime, we're gonna send the balance of the motion to committee, so the committee can start looking for funding at the same time as they're doing the design.
And, and Mr. Holden's constituents can know that he made a positive first step on this today.
Well, he did.
Ms. Oppenheim, she wrote the memo.
Very well. All right.
All right. Open the roll on Mr. Fuhrer's variation of motion number six. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Number seven.
Madam President, with regard, with regard to item seven, I would, I would move that this item be sent to the relevant city council committees, which I think would be the committee in Arts Health and Humanities and in the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, you have to push the speaker button.
Here we go again, Madam President. Fact of the matter is that we have items in the Ad Hoc Committee Report on the Budget where it specifically set aside monies for specific projects in certain districts. They cite on this committee. Fact of the matter is that this particular project monument has been requested by the Korean community for the past four or five years, and they were expecting to get it this year. It's only $200,000, it's like a pocket park, just directly across the street from Artmore Park. It'll become another pocket park. It's a monument to let them know that this is a community like you have in Little Tokyo, like you have in Chinatown, like you have in other parts of the community where you identify certain community that's doing well, improving economic development and bringing in tourism to the city of Los Angeles. And they have to come up with matching funds. The community in Koreatown is required to match, 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 match every time they want something done in that community that you give 100% to other communities. The time has come, I think, if anybody's gonna bring us together, is to be fair. We cannot require that they do it all, all the time. On a senior citizen facility they're having in that community they're planning, they ask us for $500,000, which they have not gotten, they're gonna come up with millions. Design is already done, but they have to match it whereas we grant it to other communities. Something is wrong with that. And I would think that, I don't know what you plan to do with this, Mr. Fuhrer, but I'm upset by the fact that we requiring them to match, 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 pay more, more, more.
I have a proposal.
Thank you.
Ms. Misekowsky's first.
Mr. Holden, when, when the committee heard this, the committee thought this, along with a whole lot of other ideas, might make sense, and that's why the council did approve, and Ad Hoc Committee recommended, item 37, which was to create a Neighborhood and Community Improvement and Services Fund, not matched, just a fund directly that could be a grant for local and neighborhood programs. And that amount there is, is large enough to include this project, if that's what's recommended by CD 10, or other projects in other council districts. So rather than itemize each in a GCP fund, this fund was meant to be exactly that, and out of which this could come. So I think that the recommendation by, by Mr. Fuhrer is, is appropriate to send this to committee and work with your staff and, and council district 10 to see whether or not the motion is appropriate to come out of that, item 37.
Ms. Misekowsky, I just want to remind you the fact that there were members on that committee who did set aside monies for projects in their district, and one, I can tell you, a pocket park for skateboarding and so on, and they'll, they'll still get the $250,000. We requested the $200,000 as matching funds, and I have no, I, I don't see any reason why that cannot be complied with. If you have just $250,000, then you're gonna take that, that amount in my district and give it to one project, is that fair to the other part of the district? I don't think so.
Okay, but you're on her.
And there's no way you can sell me on that.
You're on her time now.
And her time is still running.
Yes, it is, but yours is coming up after Mr. Fuhrer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Fuhrer.
Ms. Mr. Holden, I, I wanna actually reiterate what Ms. Misekowsky said. She said it very well, but I want to just note for the record, Mr. Holden, just, just so you know, and our colleagues know, there was only, to my recollection, and people should correct me if it's wrong, only one project that was specific to a particular council district that the council committee recommended, just one. And it was a, we adopted a recommendation of the mayor's office that there be a skate park created in CD 9. But that's the only proposal that emanated from any of the members. Ms. Misekowsky, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Hernandez, and myself exercised, I think, appropriate discipline and leadership on this by showing that there is a way to get through our process, allowing flexibility in each council district to do projects just like this, and not load up the committee report with these items. And Ms. Walters didn't ask for a specific item either. We actually, as I say, acceded to the recommendation from the mayor's office because CD 9 was so physically far from the other such locations where these parks were proposed elsewhere in the city, and because the kids of CD 9 need to have access to this. So I will reaffirm, colleagues, that Ms. Misekowsky's got it exactly right. Item 37 of the report they've already approved sets aside funds more than sufficient in each council district to be allocated to projects just like this. Mr. Holden can prioritize in his community, just as all of us will be required to do that, and we can move the budget process forward, and this really, this shouldn't be a process about comparing whether every district gets a specific project. It should be a process about what's best for the city as a whole. So that's my motion.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, I think this monument's gonna be this Korean warrior that looks a lot like Holden.
That's why the goatee's happening now, actually.
The one for $35 an hour that he promised him?
But, members of the council, and again, we're, we're going through this budget process. I just want to, to make sure that an item like this doesn't just die because it wasn't part of the original committee report, and I'd like it to be included also to, to go to CED, to be looked at. One of the questions, I know that, at least for the next, I guess it's like 39 days or, might be 40, depending on, I'm here June 30th, to, to, I'll be asking, as part of the CED committee, if we pass those monies that stay in the council, for council control in terms of projects in their district, then I'll be asking, has that been considered as a priority? Where's this on this list of projects? Because my understanding is part of that money is for that kind of purpose. If that doesn't ultimately happen, and it's because we still have to go through a process with the mayor, and veto, and another vote, then I would want to be able to consider this project as part of that timeliness report. So I, I wouldn't want this to die, because we're making certain assumptions. Understanding this process still has some hurdles to, to go over, so, just as long as, so I'm saying, let's not kill it, let's send it to committee, but I wouldn't have a problem if it went to CED also.
Madam President, on the balance of Mr. Hernandez's time, I think you raised a good point, and that is that, you know, if the budget at the end of the day comes back, and these funds aren't available on a just basic basis, and we fail to override that, then we have other opportunities to deal with specific district issues. I'm hopeful it won't come to that, but your point is well taken, that there are other opportunities here.
I just want to note that item 37, which we adopted, creates a fund of $3,750,000 for direct costs, no indirect costs. Mr. Holden.
I think you still missed my point, Ms. Misekowsky. All you do is read the budget, you're in the budget committee, which says, shows, clearly shows that other members of this council got their requests put in by the mayor's office. Okay? Large sums of monies in the millions, which you guys are aware of. I wasn't here at the time, you know, and I wasn't vacationing either, but I was just not here. And I'm saying to you, you are aware of it, and this is not fair. It's not a fair comparison to say we've set aside a certain, $250,000 per district after everybody got everything that they wanted in the first place, except for Koreatown. It's just not fair, it's not right. I wanted the $200,000 for the monument as matching funds, that the Koreans would have to come and match in order to get this pocket park and the monument put in place. We own the land.
But there's $3,750,000 we just put in the budget.
You didn't understand, Mrs., Madam President.
I do.
The point I just made is this.
Yes.
For those who got their special projects already in, and now they're still gonna get the $250,000 per, per council district.
I see, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanna draw a sketch on this.
Well, I mean, but the point of information, Madam President, for me, may I?
No, just on my time, I just want to say that this approach on the part of Mr. Hernandez, I can understand his sincerity and wanting to help and just make sure that this is not overlooked or forgotten, and I thank you for that. But I can tell you, I, the members of, some of these members, I'm telling you, this is not a good deal for Koreatown at all.
Madam President, this point of information.
Just wait till he's through. If now he's through, now it's your turn. Go ahead.
Can I speak now, Madam President?
You don't even have to do a point of information. You can have your full time to say anything you want.
Thank you. Point of order, Madam President. Mr. Holden has distinguished himself as having gotten by way of the appropriate processes some $250,000 for the designated project in Koreatown. Is, is that not correct? $250,000 is, 250?
No, $250,000.
And that includes you, does it not?
Yes, but I can't move it all the way.
Wait a minute now. Wait, wait, wait a minute now.
That Holden monument.
I second Mr. Holden's motion for the additional amount of resources he requests, Mr. Fuhrer.
Okay. We had Mr. Holden's original motion, we had Mr. Fuhrer's motion to send it to Arts, Health and Humanities and Community and Economic Development, and I forget which motion comes first.
I think the committee referral goes first, I believe, as a substitute.
The committee referral, okay, so we will start.
The, we, the monuments committee, the one that you just.
Yeah.
Ad Hoc Committee on Monuments.
Yeah. Now, look, guys, we fed you lunch, just stay.
Let's, let's do it.
That was so you couldn't leave. We had donuts here for breakfast. That was the first mistake.
I missed those.
Oh, I know you did. That's, we, we're not gonna go back to that issue. All right, so the first motion before us is to refer motion number seven to the Arts, Health and Humanities Committee and the CED Committee. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
All right. That has been referred to the respective committees. Motion number eight.
Madam President, lest we break the rhythm here, I will move that this item be sent to the Arts Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee.
Mr. Holden, while you're at it, Mr. Holden, would you tell me what closing out, the closeout process means here?
Well, some of the, the, these, according to the mayor's office, these agencies, these senior citizen agencies are being defunded. You have three, I think, one is in my district, I think one may be Mr. Hernandez's district, and one may be in Mr. Thomas's district, I'm not sure. But they have to phase out the kind of programs that they were being subsidized before are provided for those senior citizens will no longer be provided, and this amounts of monies needed to phase out the program, which is, which the mayor supports and all. Department of Aging came before the council and explained the fact that they were not going to provide the monies for the programs in the future, and that it should be phased out, and this is the money that they need in order to phase it out. It was not in the budget, but it should have been incorporated in the budget originally, and certainly by the Ad Hoc Committee.
Mr. Wax.
And with the monies for, why are we spending money on agencies that we've deemed non-responsive and don't want to fund anymore?
Mr. Wax, on your time, if I might? We actually, Mr. Holden expressed his concern, and so I raised it in the ad hoc process, knowing he was concerned about this. We had a substantial discussion in the Ad Hoc Committee on this item. The committee, having reviewed that information, felt that because of the nonresponsiveness and some other issues, that this was an item at best to be deferred for a more elaborate committee hearing. It is not as though we overlooked this. We discussed it at some length, so I would support the idea that it goes to committee.
Second.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I just wanted to also rise on this issue. I think it's a very serious issue when it comes to services to our seniors. And, and just to let the rest of the members understand the issue, we currently are changing our whole delivery system for services to seniors, putting a greater emphasis on senior care, daycare. In doing that, some of the previous services that used to be provided by our senior service delivery system are not gonna be provided anymore. And the agencies that have been providing those services, because they aren't part of a collaborative, because they don't have facilities that allow for daycare for seniors, are gonna basically be taken out of the process. Now, we went through this when we changed our human service delivery system collabora, where we went to collaboratives, and a lot of those individual agencies that provided those special services, those special niches, didn't get funded. And, and yet, they were an area that needed to be funded, it's just that they were unique. And, and I shared with the Department of Aging my concerns, for example, with the Chinatown services, because in that community, I have many, many seniors who are frail, and they speak Cantonese only, and it's not like they're gonna go to Lincoln Heights for their services now, or they're gonna wait for Betsedic to provide them their services at another location. So it's kinda like, now that we're changing the system. So it's kind of like, now that we're changing the system, we need to provide those same agencies some funding to deal with that change. And we changed the system before the RFP went out, and we have no idea who's going to respond and how they're going to qualify. So that RFP was just approved by committee, it's going to go out. So the only reason I'm, I'm speaking on the issue is I know we're going to need some gap funding for those agencies.
And can you take this up in your?
Right, when we were looking at it. And we're providing funding up to the period of the RFP going out. But what we found out in human services, we had to provide funding at least for almost a year to allow for that transition. It's not like the Department of Aging allowed the agencies to adapt to that transition last year, because the RFP hasn't gone out. So I'm just kind of mentioning it because that's what's clear in the horizon, that there are going to be those niches of seniors who are going to lose out unless this kind of funding can be provided. And we're looking at it in committee also.
Very good.
Mr. Holden.
Well, it should be CD too.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think that we understand the seriousness of what we're doing here on this issue. Mr. Fuhr, Satan is predominantly served by the Japanese community, senior citizens, and they've been going there, been there for many, many, many years. And so, they're not about to leave there, as Mr. Hernandez said, and go to some other community.
Right.
To phase out money would be required in order for them to become stabilized, where not, they are not destabilized, stabilized to the extent where they can continue some sort of services, even if they have to raise the money from the community for, for purpose of providing it.
Mr. Holden, for what it's worth, you know, as you're well aware, all of us care very deeply about seniors, a lot of us have worked on behalf of seniors for a long time. The question isn't whether it's a good idea, the question is, what should be accomplished right now on this item? And I think that, you know, Mr. Hernandez has expressed a willingness to have this be in his committee during his tenure, which means before the end of the fiscal year, which means before the funding for this year runs out. And I think that that analysis, coupled with Ms. Walter's analysis in the, in her committee, will enable us to have a thorough discussion, and for that matter, a discussion that may relate to other centers as well, and come back with a comprehensive recommendation of the council while we're all still sitting as council members. So, Madam President, the recommendation to Senate Committee stands. With, by the way, amended to reflect Mr. Hernandez's committee, also assuming responsibility for this item, as he's expressed a willingness to do.
Okay. All right, the motion is to send Item 8 to committee, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved, it's gone to committee.
Madam President, Item 9 is a motion from Ms. Misakowski regarding a planning position, two planning positions. I move this goes to the Planning and Maintenance Management Committee and the Budget.
Mr. Fuhr, can I just ask, can we hold that on the desk? This was brought in at the request of Mr. Burnson, and apparently, it didn't accurately reflect what he would like. I don't mind ultimately that being the result, but we may just cancel 9, substitute something else that'll come in later, since that committee.
Okay, so are we withdrawing 9?
Yeah, let me withdraw 9.
That's, we can do that, yes?
Yes, it's just very, we are running near the end.
Okay.
Okay, well, then let me, let me go ahead and amend that, and have it sent to committee if we get another one in in addition, they could reconcile.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. So the motion is to move Item 9 to committee, Plum Committee.
To Plumb and Maintenance Management, right.
I'm sorry?
And, yeah, to Plum and Budget, yeah.
And Budget, okay. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
It is gone. Okay, we now have packet number two, Items 10 through 14.
Madam President, Item 10 is a motion from our colleague, Ms. Chick. Ms. Chick, I think you want to speak to the matter, so I'll, I'll hold for a moment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fuhr, Madam President. Colleagues, the item before you in Motion 10 is a result of changes in federal guidelines on mandating that the city do its asset inventory in new and more complete ways. Right now, there's a policy decision still to be made, waiting for a joint OREs/CLA report on whether the city Controller's Office or the Department of General Services should be the entity accountable for that asset inventory system citywide. But whichever way the policy decision is decided, the resources are absolutely mandatory. At the end of this upcoming fiscal year, the new reports on our asset inventory will be required. If we don't give the resources either to the Controller's Office or Department of General Services, we will be out of compliance with federal guidelines. So we have members here from the Controller's Office, from ITA, from Department of General Services, I believe there's staff from both OREs and CLA prepared to talk about the cost piece of this as well. So I would ask that we take this under consideration today. This is not a question if we can do it, and it's really not a question of when. The only reason this wasn't part of the full report before us already was because of this confusion about which entity, either Controller or General Services, would be in charge of it, and quite frankly, neither the current Controller's Office nor General Services wants it. And that's why Budget and Finance, after Governmental Efficiency Committee, had turned to OREs and CLA to make a report to council on who should have it.
Okay.
But not on what they should have.
Madam President, Ms. Chick, we're actually checking to see if this may already be in whole or in part in a line in the budget.
Councilmember, let's, let's hold this on the table while we, oh, or do you already know?
Councilmember, I think I can confirm that, in fact, we did put $300,000 into the unappropriated balance for GASB-34 related needs. A small amount of that money was taken out to finance two positions, I believe, during the ad hoc process, leaving roughly $210,000, $220,000 still sitting in the, in the UB, awaiting a final disposition from the committee.
And point of order, the two positions that you say were funded out of that?
I'll have to defer to the CLA, that happened during the ad hoc process. There were two positions in General Services, there were accounting positions, they were unrelated to the inventory system.
Oh, then.
So to the extent that there's $210,000, or roughly $210,000 still left in the UB item, it could be used to fund these positions.
Okay, so then we're only minus $57,000, is that correct?
If, if these positions are fully funded, we, I don't, I couldn't tell whether these are fully or funded positions, but if it, realistically speaking, if it, it takes three months to fill them, so we could probably revise these numbers to match the 210 that's currently available.
Madam President, if I might, I thank you for the flexibility.
Except Mr. Hernandez also wants to be here.
I just want, a procedural thing. Given where we are, I'm going to recommend that, since there's at least 210 in the budget for this purpose, that we do send this to committee on an expedited basis, it'll go to GE, so we'll have a chance to review it, and we can return to the full council if, in fact, there is a shortfall, rather than having that discussion here over the roughly $50,000. Is that fair?
That's, that's fine, and I would like to have it referred, including the policy decision, because my understanding is OREs is almost ready to forward that report, to have it in GE Committee for June 4th, because that's our only committee in June.
Okay, so you guys are agreeing with each other, let's hear what Mr. Hernandez has to say.
I'm sorry, I heard the representative of District 3 saying, who didn't want this?
There, there's been an ongoing discussion between General Services and the Controller's Office about which is the appropriate entity to be accountable for the asset inventory system, and there's a recommendation will be forthcoming.
I think I could move that we punt it to the mayor's office, and then someone will claim it right away. But for the most part, my understanding is that, right now, we don't really need to take an action, are you just concerned about the difference? I just want to know.
I'm, I'm just concerned that the resources are given to whomever it's decided is in charge of this.
Right.
We can't do it properly without the money, it sounds like we're closed.
So then, right now, the reason I understood we took some of the funding that we had set aside in the unappropriated balance, because we didn't know what that funding was for, can we dedicate it for this purpose now?
Yes. Councilmember, the call, the funding is called out for GASB-34, I think it's perfectly appropriate that it be set aside for this purpose.
Yeah, but GASB-34 could also require other changes, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, right now, we're setting this aside for this purpose, but other things could happen because GASB-34, I just want to make people aware.
But isn't, isn't that why we're acknowledging that there is money already in the budget that we can use for this? We're sending the item to the two committees to make the policy decision about who's going to have the responsibility? And then we're also going to hear back if there is not enough money.
Right, but Madam Chair, I think what my motion is proposing to do is to set aside the difference that exists now.
Right.
For purpose of asset inventory.
Which I will second, and it's be part of the motion.
I think you're actually all agreeing.
We are.
So that'll be in place. If GASB-34 requires more things, then my understanding is it's going to take more than two accountants to understand GASB-34.
Well, let's just throw a limited amount of money.
So we'll just do this right now.
Yeah, we're all on the same page.
Okay, so now, having said we're all on the same page, let's clarify what the page is. We're earmarking $210,000 that is currently in the unappropriated balance for this.
And it should remain in the UB until there's a determination of which departmental budget it should be placed into.
And that decision is going to be referred back to, it's, it's pending in GE, right?
Actually, we know it's for Information Technology Agency. The resources, whether, whether it's General Services.
Just, just help me figure out what to do with this motion, because.
That the $210,000 remaining in the UB be, today, allocated to Information Technology Agency to replace the existing citywide equipment inventory system and develop a new centralized financial reporting system, and we are sending a discussion of, is there $57,000 more needed for the same purpose to GE Committee and Budget and Finance, as well as the remaining policy decision and the OREs/CLA report with the recommendation, should it be the Controller or General Services?
Okay, everybody got that? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Madam, Madam President, Item 11 is the, is also a motion from Ms. Chick relating to the Controller's Office. Actually, Laura, I have a proposal on this one. Rather than send it to committee, and rather than allocate the funds for the position, I'm going to move that we add the position authority without the funding today, and that within the Controller's budget or throughout the next fiscal year, we determine whether there's additional funding necessary to fill it, that gives the Controller the flexibility to determine priorities in the office. Is that okay? So there's a second for that, Madam President, the position, but not the funding for it.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
I hear a second, I hear two of them. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
We got 10 of them, nine seconds. Okay, that's adopted. Item 12.
Madam President, Item 12 is a motion related to continuing resolution authority, there's no fiscal implication from this at all, it's simply a direction regarding a personnel position.
Okay, we love these zeros. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved, that's approved. Oops, sorry, I bet you like zeros.
I just wanted a little bit description on the taxpayer advocate, the nature of the job, as it's perceived.
Sure, I can actually offer a little bit of answer, we can have Ms. Kristofal come forward as well.
Yeah, no, I think it, I think it's, it, it would be good for everyone to have public knowledge of it.
Good. Do we have a team from the Department of, Ms. Kristofal, Ms. Kristofal's right here. Mr. Wax, she's coming, it's actually a very important position that the Business Tax Advisory Committee strongly advocated, and the Department of Finance very quickly implemented in a way that is great.
She is now going to describe it, go ahead.
Hi, the taxpayer advocate position will serve the business tax community in addressing complex business tax issues that may come about throughout the year. This would be a full-time position. The individual will assist the businesses in addressing any issues that may not necessarily get resolved by existing staff.
It's like a one-stop sort of service for, I, I actually, it's interesting, Mr. Fuhr, and I'm glad we actually had this discussion, I, I can see the need for a position like that, and I, I believe that was one of the recommendations. I think that the public shouldn't be misinformed, shouldn't be under a misunderstanding, however, when the, I think the public thinks of the issue of a taxpayer's advocate, they think of someone who is basically trying to save the average taxpayer money in a system which they feel there's often wasted inefficiency. In fact, this is really like an expediting sort of position, it's a position to help business taxpayers who have needs through the complexity of the system, and while there may be a need for that, I think it's clear that that is in fact what it is, and probably should be labeled as such, rather than the generic label taxpayer advocate, which I think most people would have a different connotation of what taxpayer advocate means than the position you just explained.
Okay, open the roll on Item 12. We already voted, you're right, we did.
Yeah.
13.
Madam President, Item 13 is Mr. Padilla's motion, I'll let him just describe it.
Request by the City Attorney's Office that I introduce for administrative support that they do feel that is needed, that was not included in the budget.
Okay, Mr. Fuhr.
Okay, I'd just like to turn, Mr. Dean, for one second, Item 13. Now, if I recall correctly, Item 13 was among the items requested by the city attorney, not yet funded by the committee.
Right.
Now, we could do a couple things with this item, we could send it to committee, we could authorize the positions without the funding, or we could do both. I, I think we should adopt one of those two choices. I will, I will move that we adopt, create the positions, send a balance to committee, which would go to the, I guess, just the Budget and Finance Committee, and we'll have a chance to come back if we need to by the end of the fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, okay, and Mr. Padilla agrees to that, so open the roll on.
So you're adding the position authority?
But zero money.
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Open the roll on 13 as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved, to Item 14.
Item 14 is a motion from our president, to whom all deference is, is owed at all times. There is no cost.
Say that again, I like that part.
Yes, that's right. Our president, to whom all praise is appropriately due. The, it's, it's got zero fiscal implications, it is to add $5 million to the MICLA program for the park renovation. I take it this is in response to the Observatory issue?
This is the Observatory, and actually, the zero is for the budget this coming fiscal year. MICA, the way MICA works is the first year has no impact, it will have a $5 million-plus interest impact over, over a period of time when we do that. So, in this instance, what we, the situation is, is that there's, $18 million was raised through Prop A and the County Park Initiative, about $10 million in Prop K. The Friends of the Observatory have raised, I, my recollection is around $12 million. Situation is that in March, they have to go to contract, there's about a $10 million gap, this would take care of half that gap, assuming that the state and federal, due to its regional nature, would make up the difference, so we can go to contract.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of council, I, I really think this should go to committee, and I don't do that lightly. I know that the Prop A monies and the Prop K monies were voter initiatives, but this council's been very supportive of, of the Observatory, because we actually went through additional processes to make sure we could fund out of Prop K the $10 million. And when you talk about the $10 million, it's costing Prop K much more than $10 million, because we have to absorb the administrative and the financing cost. Here, when you look at a $5 million expenditure out of MICA, it's going to cost us more than $5 million. And my understanding is traditionally, we've used MICA funding for purposes of equipment purchases. There was a standardized policy introduced that this year, where we talked about using MICA funding for some of our long-term automobile purchases, we're using some of that same MICA funding, we're offsetting some of that MICA funding for the, making this building safe in terms of, of $25 million, but we're taking only part of it, and I just think we should observe where we're at on that. I don't have a problem with the concept, but I think it's, it is a change from the direction we were going.
Actually, I might respond.
This wasn't proposed when we were doing Prop K for the Observatory.
Right, the, the, I think the hope had been for the Observatory that we would be able to receive enough private and other public funds in order to accomplish this. What my understanding is, is in the discussions with the state and federal governments, the representatives have said, what, what money is coming, if you're asking money from the state general fund and from the, from the United States general fund, what money are you coming out of your general fund? This would be that, not a voter initiative. This is in fact the shift that, in the use of MICA, that I think that is the proper shift. Historically, historically, we have, we've used MICA for things that don't last long. And basically, it's a way, because as you can see, it doesn't have any impact in next year's budget, it's a quick way to buy equipment without having any impact until the out years.
Right.
I think City Hall East, this building, and the fire life safety aspects of it, and the tenant improvements are a long-term investment, and therefore.
And we're using MICA for that.
And the Observatory essentially has not had a renovation since its beginning in the 1930s, and so, as it relates to the use of MICA, I think this is the appropriate use of MICA.
Right, and Mr. Dean, I'll.
And we should.
And Mr. Deaton, I was asking, and this is my time, don't get me wrong, I understand your argument. What I'm suggesting is that we really look at the impact of using MICLA fund for this kind of a project. Because I can name 50 recreation facilities in my district that need to be funded, and we're not using MICLA funds for that purpose. And we are making a fundamental shift from our policy when we're funding. And it's not like the city hasn't done, provided some funding already, $10 million plus. This is not coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of MICLA. So when you were talking about the state government's argument, I'm trying to explain, this is not coming out of the general fund either. And so I'm just concerned about the precedent you're setting because every one of our recreation facilities needs the same kind of funding.
Right. Just one thing is that the money to pay MICLA is a general fund expenditure.
Right.
In other words, not next year, but the following year's budget will include something in the neighborhood of $600,000 or $700,000 to pay this off. And so it is a general fund commitment in the out. I understand your concern about the other rec centers. However, I do believe there are certain facilities, the Observatory is one, in which there is a regional and a citywide aspect to it, that I think this is a precedent that is a good precedent, one.
And Mr. Deaton, again, this is, you've just made my argument for me, and I appreciate you doing that. This motion doesn't show us what it's going to cost us. That's why it should go to the Budget and Finance Committee, should review it. I don't have a problem with the concept, but it is going to cost us some money. We should be aware of those ramifications before we make that decision. I'm not anti-observatory improvements. If you remember, I was very much pro in making sure that was included in Prop K. We should understand the ramifications of this basic shift. And we, when we were talking about MICLA funding for everything else, we were basically making some priorities as to how we wanted to make sure we used MICLA to finance projects. My understanding is this building itself needs $25 million.
Right.
And we made a decision to fund only parts of it this year, and then the next year come back for more of it.
Right.
And how much of that is MICLA-funded?
Eighty percent.
I'm just trying to put it in perspective because we should know the entire picture before we move it. And again, I think that as a committee, we should look at that. I don't know if some block rat would qualify, some timeliness money would qualify for the Observatory, if it's a question of timeliness. I don't know that.
Mr. Hernandez, you're talking. I do keep it on pause while he's answering, by the way. Mr. Holden.
You know, sometimes you have some good ideas, and sometimes your ideas are anything but that. And this is one that's anything but that. I think that Mr. Hernandez is absolutely correct. I mean, why shackle the next mayor with having to pay off this debt maybe for the next 10 years? I don't know that, how long it's going to take, because you're not specific about that at all. And the money will come from the general fund. Money's going to be used to have monuments, other parts of the district, the city. Now, I support renovating the Griffith Park Observatory, but I got to tell you this, not with this method at this time. Not at all. I would suggest that they go to committee, we take a hard look at it, and then we see where we go from here. But we cannot put up $5 million for this purpose. It'd probably end up costing us $20 million in the end, and something that we perhaps should not do at this time.
Mr. Fur.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think an amount of funding for this program is a good idea. I think we have an opportunity to leverage state funds that otherwise would not be available to us if we did not choose to do this. The questions for me don't boil down to whether we should allocate funding or not, but rather, if we allocate funding to, from what source should it come, and how much should it be? Now, Mr. Deaton, your view is that by far the best source of funding is MICLA, in part because there's no adequate cash to do this in the budget as is proposed at the moment.
We could take three, we could take $5 million just straight out of the general fund and do it. It seems to me that one of the reasons that I think you borrow money is for capital projects that last a long time.
Right. And Mr. Hernandez, I was having that conversation, that as opposed, the council has made quite clear the policy distinction between funding the acquisition of vehicles with a short useful life or funding computers with a short useful life with MICLA. We've rejected that as a bad use of MICLA money. And in contrast, have done, as you point out, capital projects, projects with a long-term useful life with MICLA, much the same way that a homeowner borrows money for a house. It's a long-term investment, cash isn't available, and so you do it on that basis. What do you think is the critical mass necessary to enable us to leverage state dollars adequately while at the same time keeping faith with those who have been pouring private dollars into Griffith Park? This is, I am a little more distant from the details of the Griffith Park fundraising effort and their efforts with the state.
It would seem to me at least a $3 million commitment by the city would show good faith to the, at least one-third of the out. We need, the city will need, in order to let a contract for the construction, for the plans as drawn, for the renovation of the Observatory, by the end of the next fiscal year, there's $10 million short. It seems at least a third of that from either from a general fund appropriation, which I, is possible, but I would recommend at least a $3 million commitment from MICLA.
Yeah, colleagues, I'm going to actually move to amend the motion of the President, something I do with great trepidation, to make it a $3 million allocation from MICLA. And if we find that there are additional shortfalls down the road, we can deal with them then. I think that sends a positive message, retains meaningful discipline in our process, and gets us where we need to go. So that'll be my motion.
Okay. Ms. Zikowski.
I'll be happy to second Mr. Fur's motion. If we can, perhaps at the same time, make the recommendation now, and I agree that this is exactly what MICLA is supposed to be for, and something of a citywide presence is important and is critical, and clearly, I think Griffith Observatory falls into that category. I have no problem in modifying it to $3 million, but I would like to make sure that we also then ask for a report back, whether through Arts, Health and Humanity or Budget and Finance, to determine what is really happening with the money at both the state and/or federal level, as well as if, in fact, it is required that we might need to go as high as $5 in MICLA, that we don't go through a bonding proceed for $3 if we really need $5, and that we get that report back to see whether or not it needs to be bumped up on a MICLA finance process before we actually commit. So at this point, committing to $3 to show the good faith to the state and feds that we are willing to put some of our own money by way of a MICLA bonding process, I think makes sense.
I think a report back on the whole Observatory would be appropriate for both committees.
Maybe we actually do it at the Observatory to really see what we're funding. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. So let me just be clear what the motion is. The motion is to amend this, to commit to $3 million, to ask for a report back following what's happening with the state for the purpose, before we issue any bonds, so that we will know if we need to deliberate further on it. Okay, Mr. Holden.
Right. They're still going to go to your committee. They're still going to committee, is that correct?
Yeah, they'll probably go to Arts and to Budget.
Now, wait. The, that's what we need to, I mean, that's a good question.
Yeah, it's still going to committee. It still goes to committee, yes.
Yes, but there is a--
There's an action today.
But an action today for $3 million instead of $5, and then a full report to both Arts and Health and Humanities and Budget and Finance on state funding and the entire construction project.
I'm not going to vote for that because--
Okay. So your motion to send it to committee will be voted on first. You want to send the whole center committee?
Otherwise, you're incurring a debt, I'm on my time now, I can speak. You're incurring a debt for future generations, and that's a real problem for me. Mr. Deaton, about 10 years ago, I believe, 12 years ago, you recommended to this council and supported that we do a sale/leaseback of the Central Library.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did. You were in here lobbying for that.
No.
Well, who was it then? Maybe I forgot.
Well, when I did Alexis Nexus, I think it came from the mayor's office, but that's another--
It came from the mayor's office, but you guys were not opposing it, you were supporting it. And that's why you got a 14 to 1 vote. There was one vote, no vote, to sell, to do a sale/leaseback of the library, and they were about to sell City Hall. They still come up with some dumb ideas from time to time.
You don't, you don't--
And I'll give you an example.
14 people voted to sell the library.
Rather than put the city in debt on this issue, recommend a sale/leaseback on this.
Mr. Holden, I'll give you a list of my bad ideas.
You can pay to go up there and--
It's quite extensive after 35 years, but that isn't one of them.
Yeah.
I don't think there were 14 votes to sell the library.
It was 14 to 1.
Uh-uh. Okay.
You wanted to get the vote for you, Mr. Wax.
Okay. Mr. Wax.
And you voted to sell it.
I did not. Mr. Wax. I didn't vote to rename it either. Mr. Wax.
You voted to sell it.
Thank you, Madam-- You know, members of council, there's certain, there's certain institutions and facilities at all that give a city its greatness, and they're not, they don't belong to any council district. They're not, they serve everybody, the Observatory, the zoo, the Central Library, the Science Museum. I've gone down to the Science Museum at least a dozen times now in Mr. Ridley Thomas's district and watched the endless, endless numbers of children going through there, learning, expanding there, reflecting the diversity of this city. If you go to the zoo, you see the same thing. If you go to the Observatory, you see that. They're of the most positive and the most enriching things a city can do. They have raised over $50 million already. It's not like a pie-in-the-sky idea. They're down the line. They stand to lose more than $3 million if they're delayed in construction, if they can't go ahead. The plans are drawn, the process is along, they've raised over $50 million. This helps put them across the finish line in a timely way. You absolutely cannot even begin to equate this with some of the other projects that we said we want to look at in committee. This has been looked at. It has gone through that process. It has earned all of this support. It will, it will benefit everybody, and we really should make the commitment to it today.
Ms. Chick.
Yes, and I'm very much prepared for the reasons articulated by Mr. Wax and others to support going forward today. I just would like a comment in terms of increasing MICLA funding and our debt policy, and where this puts us in non-voter-approved debt.
This puts us well within the policy. With what's been already approved by ad hoc, and if you add this on--
We're still way below what we need to be.
It will be low to 6%.
And it's also within the kinds of things. It fits both parts of the policy, both the nature of the borrowing and the percentage.
Okay, and I also think that it's a very wise, fiscally wise way to go, to help promote and further and improve a citywide resource, as so well stated.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, there's always this will, and then there's reality, and we get to deal with that. And right now, what I want to remind everybody is that I think we all believe we have a facility that is historic in nature, that serves a greater purpose for all Angelenos, and we should restore it. We believed that in 1996 and '97, when we put the Observatory on Prop K. Now, I want you to understand this because that movement at that time was the beginning of the renovation movement of the Observatory. You see, we provided the first $10 million, and the county provided the next, I guess, 12 million or 15?
Eighteen.
Eighteen million. Now, that's just what we're providing, then there's costs associated to that. So that was 28 million. Now, I just heard Mr. Wax talk about them raising over 50 million. My understanding, they raised about 43 million, including our 28.
It's rough.
Okay? Yeah, including the 28. So now, the difference is 20 million. I'm trying to explain that because we know that Leonard Nimoy gave a million dollars, and maybe if the rest of the Star Trek crew comes through, we can get closer to that. But the reality is, when we were providing the 10 and the 15, we were under the understanding they were going to be able to raise the difference. And today, we're hearing something different. Now, it's not just the city and the county that has this responsibility. The federal government should be helping with this. The state should be helping with this because we all agree it's a regional facility. It's not just Angelenos facilities. And we have to get that commitment understood. There has to be a will by a city as a whole and a region as a whole to make this happen. Now, I'm just bringing it to our attention because what's fiscally responsible is to make sure the incentives are there, to make sure we provide the opportunity to make it happen. It's not that we build it, not if the people don't want that to happen. And that's the difficult part here. I have no problem with a motion that's before us that says $3 million commitment, and I don't necessarily think it has to be MICLA, but a $3 million commitment, and let's find out what everybody else is going to do. But it's not like we've done nothing. I'm trying to explain that because we started this movement. And I think that we should understand the ramifications of our decision.
Okay. Mr. De--
I know. I don't want to give the impression that the city has done nothing, and Mr. Hernandez is exactly correct. The money was included in Prop K. We also lobbied with the county to be sure that the $18 million was there. They have raised $10 to $12 million more. They are hearing, though, at the state and the federal level, and they're making the inquiries, and we're assisting in those inquiries and trying to pave the way to do that. And it is a responsibility, not only of the city, of the region, and of the state. And just a side note, my wife's a teacher in Santa Ana. We arranged one night to take one of her middle school kids up there who wanted to be an astronomer, and Dr. Krupp gave him a fantastic tour, and I was happy, of course, to join along. And it shows that even out of the county, there is a need. However, I think we need to send a message that at least $3 million, and we should move forward on that.
All right. I believe we had two motions here. We had first Mr. Holden's motion to send the whole thing to committee, which we will vote on first. If that does not go, the whole thing does not go to committee, the next motion was an amendment to this one to change it to $3 million and get a report back from the CLA.
No, that was, we're going to boldly go where no council has gone before.
Right. And the first is Mr. Holden's motion to send it to committee. Open the roll. What was your motion?
The motion that it would go to committee, whether it be $3 million or $5 million, and say it would come back with a report, is that correct?
That's the motion Ms. Zikowski made. That was, we're going to put $3 million in today. I thought your motion was to send the whole thing to committee because you said you weren't going to vote for it. Did I misunderstand you?
I'm not going to go vote for it anyway, but go ahead and do that.
Why don't we clean and clear it and just vote?
All right, let's clear the roll. Start over again. We are now, all right, now that we've got that understood. My light hasn't gone off here yet. No, Mr. Holden said that wasn't his motion. It was just an announcement. Then why is my light still? Because I don't want that to show up as no vote.
Mine shows too.
All right, we're going to have, you're probably going to have to call this one.
Only on your side of the--
All right. So Mr. Holden, I was incorrect. Mr. Holden was not moving to send it to committee. He was announcing he wasn't going to vote for it. So the motion is to put $3 million in MICLA in the budget today to ask the CLA and the CIO to report back to us as we keep track of what other funding might be available, and then if additional money is needed, that would come from Budget and Finance.
Right.
So we're going to open the roll, except that it won't, there it goes. Okay, open the roll on that motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
All right, that's approved.
Okay.
Brings us to packet three, starting with--
And I think maybe the last, the last one. Is that correct, Mr. Deaton? Great. All right. So item, item 15 is a motion regarding garage attendance brought in by Mr. Hernandez. I'm going to recommend that that matter go to the ITGS Committee and the Budget Committee for further discussion.[1719.23] for further discussion.
Anybody else? Okay, open the roll. I'm referring this to ITGS and budget and finance. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Item 16.
Madam President, item 16 is a motion from our colleague Ms. Mizakowski regarding a sexual orientation counselor to satisfy requirements of the Grobison decision. Ms. Mizakowski, is this a matter on which we need to vote for legal reasons today? Is it a matter that can go to committee?
I think it can go to committee. We need to have this position, whether or not personnel can handle it within salary savings or account for another way. I don't have a problem sending it to committee, but we do, we did make a commitment to allow to have this position available.
Then don't we need to authorize the position, even if we don't fund it today?
I think that that may be a prudent approach. Madam President, I'll move your recommendation that we authorize the position, withhold on the funding, and set it to personnel and public safety to come back to the full city council.
Okay. Cindy, did you want to add something?
No, that's fine.
No, okay. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Item 17.
Madam President, item 17 is a motion from Ms. Chik, which has no fiscal impact. It makes a change within an account in the Information and Technology Agency. I would move that we approve this matter before us and proceed.
Councilman, sorry.
Go ahead.
Where'd that sound came from?
I just want to point out that there is a general fund impact. By not transferring the $54,000 to the general fund, the general fund will be shorted by $54,000.
Well, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Rubin. So with that in mind, rather than approving it today, why don't we demonstrate the flexibility of the full city council and have this go to committee, to ITGS, and budget for a report back to the council? So I withdraw my prior motion.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to make a little technical change, bringing that as ITA. Can we remove the Channel 36 designation? My understanding that in some places, it might be a different number.
Yeah, well, yeah, let's both remove that and send it to committee.
Okay, there we are. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. To committee. Item 18.
Madam President, item 18 is a motion from Ms. Mizakowski, having been chastened by Mr. Rubin on the last matter. I think this is an item on which there's no fiscal impact. It moves from the general city purposes, excuse me, from the unappropriate balance to general city purposes funding. I believe this is for defense representation, is that correct, Ms. Mizakowski?
This is the issue that was in agreement with what we had negotiated on the salary related to the proposition that was on the ballot in May, and that needs to be available the first of the year. So it just moves from one place in the budget to another.
Right, I'll move that we approve item 18.
Okay, open the roll on item 18, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Item 19.
Madam President, item 19 was inadvertently omitted in the course of the last-minute deliberations in the ad hoc committee. The ethics position requires an additional position to deal with conflict of interest compliance, in particular to educate relevant parties in the city on that provision of law. Given the inadvertence of its omission, I will move we approve item 19.
Okay, item 19 is before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Item 20.
Item 20 is a motion from our colleague, Mr. Savornich, regarding the Harbor Pistol Range with $100,000 fiscal impact. I'd ask that this matter go to public safety and then to the budget committee, back to the council.
All right, anybody else? Okay, oh, okay, Mr. Savornich.
With a report back in 45 days.
No, is that what you want to do?
No, because I won't be here for five days after that.
How about 25 days?
Yeah. Well, I wanted to bring your attention, colleagues, of why this motion is here and why I brought it in, and it's, I don't bring it in because I do so in jest, I do so because of the issues that were raised. Down at Harbor Division, since 1946, the Los Angeles Police Department has had use of Navy property on which was located almost 50 years ago now, the pistol range. Each and every month, 1,000 LAPD officers qualify to be able to use their firearm at that facility. It has been privately funded for all of these years. We have to have the community raise funds in order for police officers to qualify to use their weapons in defense of the community. It was brought to my attention by the officers that since 1946, not one dime of public money has been invested to upgrade this facility or to maintain this facility. And I thought that if indeed the officers that find it most convenient to qualify at this facility, which are officers that work the 6th District, the 8th District, the 9th, the 10th, the 15th, the 14th, if they cannot qualify at Harbor Range, they have to go all the way out to the East Valley, 65 miles away from some of the places where they are deployed, to qualify and then come back to duty or do so on their off time. So what we are doing are taking officers off the streets who should be on patrol, who should be doing their jobs as detectives, and they're having to traverse an hour, an hour and 15 minutes, an hour and a half to get there, qualify, and then have to drive all the way back to their post. That's when they're on duty, or they have to do an on-off duty time. I found that $100,000 in order that we could continue to qualify officers from South Bureau in an area which is close to their work made a lot of sense. I'm sure it makes a lot more sense than having to have officers drive all that way in order to qualify and then drive all the way back. This is but a fraction of what it would cost to make them do that. And so while I understand that there's a motion to send this to public safety and budget, this is one of those common sense things, Madam President, members of the council, that we would save hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more than a million dollars, having them qualify for their pistol training, their firearm training where they work versus having to make them travel to go do it. And so I don't mind if this does go to committee, but this is a serious issue, and I'd like to see it resolved at least before this council member's tenure expires.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, I've never seen Mr. Savornich so impassionate. I think we're going to name this the Savornich Pistol Range Shoot. Members of the council, and I agree with Mr. Savornich, I won't be here in 45 days, and I'm looking forward to that. I share with people that I'm not going to miss them, they keep on saying they're going to miss me, but I'm not going to miss them because I'm still going to be here. And I say that because I still live here and I'm still going to care about these things. We, as council members, have a variety of sources of funds. We have the Land Trust Fund that we can use for this kind of a project. We have other funds that we can use, but I'm introducing a motion that's coming in in regards to the neighborhood improvement funds that we are setting aside to allocate some funding for purposes of Cypress Park Lighting District design. And that's an important project to me that did not get included in this, and so I'm using those funds for that kind of a project. I'm just suggesting it because as we're leaving and departing, the kinds of projects that might not get funded through this process, we should look at our own backyard as to how we can fund them. And I know that I have the police firing range at Legion Park that is basically funded through the Police Revolver Club, and that's something the police have negotiated at least with us for that purpose. Again, there's a variety of ways of looking at this, but I happen to know that I've worked closely with Mr. Savornich on many projects in his district, and he's working very hard to get those projects funded as he's leaving. And it's always going to come down to what are the most important ones, and how do you get them done? And there's a variety of funding sources that we should be looking at. I'm not sure this one's going to get funded through this process, but it might happen through those neighborhood... I guess what I'm suggesting, Rudy, is I took $45,000 out of the next council member's budget for the Cypress Park Lighting District, and that'll be a motion that comes before us, and I hope I have everybody's support, but I'm giving you an idea you might want to use.
I wouldn't mind taking $100,000 out of the next council member's district from the first district.
Okay. Ms. Mizakowski.
I rise to concur with the recommendation of Mr. Fur, and also to indicate that we will bring this back quickly. In my discussion with the police department, there are some issues there about the facility, and you're right, it is old. There are other issues in terms of who uses it and whether or not charges other than police officers are made, and whether or not if we charge something, we can help facilitate a fund to help upgrade it. We have a, we've been using it for a long time, but it may not even be a legitimate long-term leases in effect there. So we need to evaluate the whole facility, determine what the costs might be to make it, to bring it up to whatever safety requirements that are necessary. And so I will bring this back before 45 days out of Public Safety Committee with an evaluation and a recommendation. But you're right, you're absolutely right that I think the idea of maintaining it and keeping it for police officers in that southern area of the city to be able to qualify makes sense. So we just need to work with the facility, with the Navy, to see what is necessary.
Mr. Fur. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Savornich, of all the motions that have been presented today, I think that this is number one in line. Number, and I think that the LAD, the police officers from Los Angeles have been kicked around, pushed around, even by many members of the council for too long, and yet they're showing judgment, some good judgment, in supporting some of the council persons from time to time. Now, we've given them trouble on, they have to pay so much to park at City Hall or at their job sites. We have to pay for parking, they have to pay for garaging their automobiles in many We ask them too much of them, we ask them to protect and to serve the people of this city, to keep it safe where we can live here and bring in businesses to be employed here, and yet we put an extra burden on them. For example, they just have a 65 miles one way to go from where they can qualify not to pick a range...
For some of them, that's a round trip.
Round trip, 65 miles. And that's maybe our gas or their gas if they're off duty. It's just an unfair request, and why we could not handle this today, I don't know. I think that to upgrade this, renovate this pistol range is long overdue. We're going to have top police officers who are able to fire at will and protect this community and don't miss their target, make sure that they go and go after criminals. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Thomas. They're not going to hit you or anybody like that. But the fact of the matter is that, all right, I asked a few of them, they said they're not mad at you yet. But I agree that we should appropriate this $100,000. Maybe Mr. Deed would like to finance it through the MECLA fund program.
We're going to finance it by selling the names of the targets for people we don't like.
That is a good idea.
All right, so in any case, I don't know why it has to go to committee, but if you say it's okay, come back before you leave here, fine. But they should find the money for this program.
Mr. Savornich.
Yes, one of the things that I failed to mention, Madam President, and I would hope that this would be one of the reasons that we expedite this request, is that in speaking with the bargaining unit for the police officers, the Police Protective League, they have articulated their support of wanting to keep this facility open and running and that it indeed needs some upgrade. I think that we cannot emphasize the point enough that if you do qualify 1,000 officers a month to carry their firearm and then have to remove them from duty or make them qualify on their own time, and you make it as inconvenient as possible for them to do so, that is taking officers out of our neighborhoods. This facility, again, for almost 55 years, has been a local resource for where the majority of officers are deployed in the southern part of the city, and to not seriously consider $100,000 as an investment in infrastructure in order that they can continue to be qualified and handle their firearm as they go about doing their business of protecting the city, I think would be an injustice. So Councilman Mizakowski, if indeed we could bring this forward quickly, and Mr. Fur, if we could indeed bring this forth quickly, like in a week or so, it would be very, very much appreciated.
Councilmember, councilmember, I'd like to also suggest that we've included $2 million in CIEP for police facility upgrades. It is not designated at this time, and so it would be an appropriate source of funds for this kind of upgrade.
Thank you, and I don't need all $2 million, just $100,000 would be fine.
Hey, you never know.
Okay, we'll take it.
So the motion is to send this to Public Safety Committee and Budget and Finance, well...
Madam President, may I respectfully request that since the police officers are the ones who can benefit and they need this program, that we have a representative from the league just to share his comments with us.
Well, we had a public hearing.
I know, but I request on my time then that he gives...
On your time, you may certainly do that.
All right, would you just...
Go over to the...
Ken Hillman, Los Angeles Police Protective League, and I'll make this very quick. It's not just that 1,000 officers, I think if you realize that officers qualify on a bi-monthly basis, when you have 1,000 qualifying each month, that's roughly 25% of the entire police department is using that facility to qualify. And I also being a resident in the San Pedro area, to go out to like the Davis Center, if you had to shoot on a weekend or whatever, would be 65 miles one way, that's 130 miles round trip. And the same can hold true for any of the officers that are actually working in the South Bureau area. You would actually waste about three to four hours per car with two members in the car of city time just qualifying. And again, I think it's, should be noted that the monies that we're talking about appropriating, the officers that are assigned to that facility do all of the repairs themselves. A couple of them are contractors on the side, they don't charge them, they just do this on their free time, and they'll do all these repairs. So this is really the bottom line minimum it would require to update that facility and get it up to code. And so just respectfully, we'd request that you continue to keep that facility open. It's a tradition facility, it's been open since 1946, and I think it's an integral part of the LAPD. Thank you.
I just want to assure you, we're doing everything we can here to keep it open. We're just trying to find out the best way to pay for it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so the motion is to send this to public safety, it will be back before Mr. Savornich's tenure expires so that we will have the opportunity to identify funds.
Don't use that word expired so lightly.
Only your tenure, not you, only your tenure. But I'm open to synonyms. You have a synonym you prefer? Okay, all right, open the roll on item 20, going to Public Safety Committee to come back within as close to a week as possible.
Thank you.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Item 21.
Madam President, item 21 is Mr. Hernandez's motion, to which he referred a moment ago. I would urge approval. It redirects funds from that Neighborhood Community Improvement and Services Fund to a project in his district.
Basically, this, just so, because you have a series of these.
Yes, I see that. They all have zeros on, which is nice.
And it's taking, all you're doing is specifying within the council, each council district's allocation, the specific project, not to exceed, obviously, the 250.
Okay, item 21, open the roll.
Approval.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Item 22.
22 is the same thing.
22 is the same.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Also approved. Item 23.
23 is the same for Ms. Walters.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's also approved, and we go to the next packet.
24 is a motion by our colleague Ms. Mizakowski on Mr. Burnson's behalf. I would recommend this go to public safety and then to budget in the full council.
Okay, all right. Motion is to send it to committee. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Item 25.
Item 25 is a motion from Mr. Savornich, maybe without speaking too rapidly, to confirm with all those at the table that this is indeed a cost-neutral item, and if it is a cost-neutral item, then I would recommend we approve it.
Mr. Fur, there might be some problems with the usage of these monies. It may not be an eligible project under the Arts Development Trust Fund.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Savornich, given that, let's send it to committee with a quick turnaround, we'll send it to Ms. Walters' committee and budget.
Find that out.
And we'll move it back out before your tenure concludes, ends, finishes, not terminates or expires.
Actually, we may be able to find out in time for the final vote on the budget, although I don't know if they have...
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, but we'll want to be sure to get it back before the conclusion of Mr. Savornich's tenure.
Okay, so item 25 to Arts Health and Humanities.
And budget, yes.
And budget, I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, I had my button pressed since item 21, 22, you've just been moving right along.
Sorry, I've been looking at this, it's going so fast, I apologize.
But I just want to get back to 21 and 22, I don't have a problem with them. Should we all be creating that kind of a fund? I'm just asking the question.
There is a fund, under the budget, every district would have a quarter million dollar fund. People can choose to designate today, or it can be designated later.
Right, and...
It probably doesn't matter whether you designate today or not, the fund's created anyway.
Well, my assumption is Mr. Fur is a lot smarter than me, that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, I don't know.
Don't assume facts not on evidence, Mr. Hernandez.
Okay.
Probably you'd take a vote on that.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm scared I might win.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay. Are we back?
Item 26.
Did we actually vote on 25? No, we're sending 25 to committee. Okay.
Yeah, I think you'd lose.
Yeah, let's just vote on that. So let's vote on, hold on, Mike. Let's just vote to send item 25 to Arts Health and Humanities. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Cleaner that way. That's approved. Okay, 26.
Item 26 is a motion from Mr. Hernandez to great positions in the Planning Department. I'd move that that go to the Planning and Land Management and Budget Committees.
Okay. Anybody else?
If I could speak...
Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to make sure Councilman Mizakowski and I were in agreement on the positions and everything else we're sending to the committee. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're all right. Open the roll on sending 26 to Plumb Committee. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That's approved.
Since item 26 includes what was in item 9, let me recommend that item 9 be received and filed. I believe that was the one. Yes. So that's not redundant. Item 9 was adding some planners which are included in 24.
That was item 9 in the basic committee report?
No, no. Item 9 in our motions subsequent.
In our packets here. Okay. That's the Mulholland Design Review Board.
Right. They're in 24.
So I think we probably need to reconsider item 9.
For the purpose of receiving and filing that item?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so move.
Open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Okay. And now, as part of the action on 20, where'd it go? 27, 6.
6.
We will also receive and file number 9.
No, no, no. 26 goes to committee.
26 goes to committee and item 9 goes with it or we're receiving?
So item 9's filed.
Okay. So, thank you. Sorry, it's getting late here. So we'll do it in two votes. Then let's receive and file item 9. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, we did that. All right. And we've now, okay, so you've got us down that we've done 26, sent it to committee. Okay. Item 27.
Item 27 is a motion from our colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, regarding a new position in the Department on Disability, I believe. And I'd move that that go to Ms. Walters' committee and to Budget Committee. Or Personnel, actually, I'm sorry.
Well, let me just simply say it is being brought to the attention of everyone because it has been in Personnel, that it has been reviewed thoroughly there. This is a compliance issue, a citywide compliance issue with the ADA. Employment provisions of both state and federal law, $62,000 for the appropriate staff position, Personnel, as well as the city attorney has already agreed that this is necessary. And with that in mind, I think we should not be in a position of further delay, and we should move this today.
Madam President, for what it's worth, we could address it today, or we could send it to Budget and have it come back in the very near future, in the next week or two. I don't know enough about it to...
I think the issue is to get it in place by the beginning of the fiscal year.
Well, I would think so at minimum, but it would be a mistake to delay in light of the compliance issue with both state and federal jurisdictions. And anything that puts us closer to being further under scrutiny with ADA compliance is properly imprudent.
Madam President, can I ask if anybody at the table has reviewed this issue, just so I...
Actually, my question is, what does this person do with respect to compliance? It says coordinate disabled employment issues, and I know that there is much behind that. Mr. Fujioka.
It was my understanding that this function was performed by staff in the Department of Disability. Because when I was in Personnel, and at the time when disability was part of Personnel, we had someone who had this specific responsibility. And so I would need to hear from either department to find out if that has changed. But I thought that, I know that...
Well, how about if we hold it on the desk for a few minutes and maybe...
Personnel is here, if you wish, or they could do it as you wish.
Well, I was gonna suggest that they go find that out while we see what else we can vote on here, and then we'll come and get it out.
Madam Chair, I guess the other way to expedite this is to approve the position and send the balance that is funding to Budget and Finance to come back to our attention.
We could do that as well.
The only hesitance I have, and it's not a big deal, is if Mr. Fujioka thinks that there may already be a position doing the job, we can rectify that, get that clarified.
I can assure you that such isn't the case, as a result of our going over this several times in committee, having talked with the Chair, the Head of Personnel, with the city attorney who's assigned to this. That is why we're bringing it in today again.
Let's do Mr. Ridley Thomas's suggestion.
I was gonna say, I think that doing, Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mark.
Mark? No. I'll actually second the motion to approve the position. The funding can be analyzed in Budget and Finance.
Okay. Okay. Open the roll on that motion. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That is approved. 28.
28 is a motion from Mr. Savornich regarding additional funding for positions to extend pool hours at the Peck Park Pool. And we could do a couple of things, Mr. Savornich. We could send it to committee, or we could, this is something for which the local, the Community and Neighborhood Improvement Fund would be eligible. Let you speak to it.
Well, aren't we trying to do this for the summer? Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, members of the council. We do have the general manager here of Reckon Parks, and I believe, the only reason I brought this up, is that prior to the budget process beginning, there was a commitment, I believe, and I don't want to speak for the department, there was a commitment by Reckon Park staff and by the Board of Reckon Parks Commissioners, that this was an issue that was going to be resolved during the budget deliberations. There was a series of community meetings held, and the commitment was made. However, the funding fell out of the budget. And so I would think that if commitments are made to the community, those are commitments that need to be kept. Hence, this motion isn't brought in willy-nilly. It's brought in order to keep a commitment to the community that was deleted from the budget but was made by staff. If I am misspeaking here, I don't mind being corrected on the record, but I do believe that a commitment was made to the community, that this was an issue that was going to be addressed. And I'd be happy to, Madam President, with your permission, to have our general manager address the issue.
Good afternoon. I'd be happy to speak to that. Peck Park Pool is one of our most heavily-used seasonal pools. There's been a strong interest on behalf of the local community of having the season extended there. And we had submitted that in the budget last year and again through this year. While extending the season itself has not been approved in what you've acted on to date, what was approved was the funding to turn this into a year-round pool. And so the notion that we had been acting on was to operate for the summer with the pool open the regular time as all of the other seasonal pools are, and then to commence the modifications necessary to turn this into a year-round pool, so it would reopen spring from now, and then become a year-round pool. The request, as I understand it, that is before you, would instead suggest that at the end of this fall season, the season be extended for an additional 90 days at the pool, and then commence the renovations necessary to make it into a full year-round pool. When it reopens the following spring, it could remain year-round and open continuously thereafter. Have I answered your question adequately? So it was extended two weeks last year in the direction of the commission.
The question he asked you was whether there was a commitment to address this during the budget, and why, if there was, it wasn't addressed during the budget.
It was addressed in the context of the budget in that we did submit a request to extend the season. Okay, you still have time.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the issues to which I think we need to be very clear is that the Reckon Parks Commission also made a public commitment to the community that this is an issue that was going to be addressed during the budget. How and why, the particulars were not addressed, those reasons I'm not privy to. But I do believe that if indeed that commissioners and staff make commitments on behalf of the city, that those are commitments that we need to keep. I have no problem asking that this item go to Arts Health and Humanities and Budget and Finance, but in the same spirit as we have been addressing the other issues today, this is one of those unresolved issues that this council member, again, would like to see resolved prior to his demise. And if we could, I would really appreciate it.
Councilmember, you just mentioned that the mayor's budget did include $1 million to actually make this a year-round pool, and we would support the adjustment to enable that to begin this year. It's a small adjustment relative to the $1 million that's already in the budget.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Ms. Mizakowski.
The only question I had in trying to reconcile the statement from Reckon Parks was that with the expectation and budgeting for making this a full year-round pool, you said that there needed to be some refurbishment or some adjustments. I presume that means adding a heater and things like that. And I'm not sure, given what you did budget, which was that it would close down after a certain period of time so you could do the work to reopen in spring as full-time, whether or not if we extend its current summer season for a longer period of time, do you have enough time to, when it's closed, to put in the refurbishment so that it can become a full-time year-round, and is that adjustment accounted for?
Yes, we do. The pool would normally close in early September. We believe it can be extended the 90 days in item 28 that you're looking at right now, and that we can then accomplish between then and spring the necessary improvements to reopen it, and it would remain open thereafter continuously as a year-round pool.
Okay. That is my concern, because with Reckon Parks, I mean, I think it would be worse to not have it ready to open in next spring or summer, when it's the summer season and you're gonna have the, you know, higher demand because that's the season for it. So we really need certainty that Reckon Parks can deliver on that refurbishment and the installation that's necessary in three months less time than you thought you needed when you put the budget together. So that's a very encapsulated period of time to try to do this work. And given some of the issues that we've had with other pools, in particular when we start to go in and then find that there are other problems, I just want to make sure that we're not shortchanging that district to have something longer this season and then not have it open when it really needs to open as soon as possible for year-round experience next spring. So again, I have no problem with doing it this way, but that's putting an extra burden on your shoulders to make sure that it's committed. Otherwise, next spring, that pool isn't gonna open on time.
I understand.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, this conversation, not bothered. How many pools in my district are year-round?
We have about a dozen year-round pools throughout the city.
In my district?
I can't answer that off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Highland Park? No.
No.
Echo Park? No. Lincoln Park?
No.
No. I don't have a year-round pool. I'm surprised to hear there are year-round pools. The issue I brought up ad hoc is the fact that some of my constituents, particularly in Highland Park, had a direct request. They want to be able to use the pool room, the room, as an extra room because they're so crowded, but they can't because there's no maintenance cost. They're not allowed to use it because of the lack of maintenance cost. And I'm bringing it up because these are areas that are pool deficient. And now I'm hearing a whole different argument coming from a different parts. And I would think that in the areas where you don't have pools, particularly in people's backyards, and you don't have agencies with pools, there should be a priority of making them year-round. I'm just asking the question because it doesn't seem that we're treating the city the same all over the city when we bring this kind of an issue up. So again, I didn't have a problem with the funding, but I know that I was just asking for additional maintenance monies so that we could keep a facility, not the pool itself, open. Just a place where people could have meetings and use it for other reasons, because they don't have those kinds of facilities at their parks. And so I don't have a problem with this going to Budget and Finance. And I understand Mr. Savornich talking about commitments that have to be kept. A lot of commitments have been made that aren't kept and haven't been kept. And I just, I was bothered when I was hearing this discussion. I thought it was important that the rest of the city understand that it's not like we all have swimming pools, particularly close to us, and it's not like they're all open extended hours and that they're open year-round. And we need to look at more of a citywide picture when we talk about this kind of funding.
Mr. Savornich.
And the reason why I single out this facility, and Ellie, correct me if I'm wrong, the other pool in the community, which is the Gaffey Pool, has been closed for how many years now?
Many.
Okay. So the other pool, the pool that I was able to use once in a while as a child, has been closed, I believe, at least since possibly the beginning of my tenure, maybe a few years after that. And the facility needs so much repair that it is no longer repairable. It has to be rebuilt, costing millions of dollars.
So there's only two pools in the entire district?
I believe there may be...
In the harbor area, those are the only ones.
There's two in the harbor, but four in the entire district. None of them, I believe, are year-round. And so one of the concerns that I have is that the one pool is closed. The other pool, what they're asking is that it go year-round, but in the interim, that we at least extend the hours in order that it can be used since the other pool is closed. And that's what we're talking about.
Okay. Mr. Fuhr.
Well, I just...
And I hope we're ready to vote.
I think we're ready to go. Mr. Savornich has indicated that we should send it to, that he's pleased with sending it to the respective committees. We'll get it back during the tenures of Mr. Savornich and others. But I think that although, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Although Mr. Hernandez didn't, I don't think specifically move it, I think that what Mr. Hernandez is talking about in plain English is citywide equity. And the question is to whether there is a policy on this issue, and I think that Art should get a report on that issue, Mike. Is that consistent with your statements? So let's roll that into the motion.
Okay. I think it would be useful for all of us to see an inventory of city pools that are open, closed, repaired, and so on. All right. Open the roll on 28, as amended to require the report. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That's approved. Brings us to 29.
Madam President, we're inching our way toward the end here. Mr. Savornich? One can only hope. Hold on a second. Item 29 is your motion regarding the Bannings Landing Community Center and the Watts Cultural Crescent. I believe that both of those may be eligible for that fund. Under normal circumstances, those would be committee items. How would you like to proceed?
I think it would be appropriate. One of the things, as you recall, it might be a couple of years now, is that the city underwent a very strong program to bring facilities back online and build new ones, but we had not considered security at the facilities. One of the facilities was the municipal buildings, both in Van Nuys and in San Pedro. What we have before us are two city facilities which are opening up that doesn't have any security at the facilities. So between the two facilities there before us are almost $5 million in city infrastructure that is going to be coming online with no ways of protecting them. I think it would be appropriate that, and I don't mind doing this either, is to ask that ITGS take a look at this within the next couple of weeks, as well as Budget and Finance, see whether or not the appropriate funding has been articulated here in the motion, and have this come back under the same time constraints that we're looking at at the other motions, Mr. Fuhr.
Okay. So in that case, that will be the motion, is to send it to ITGS and Budget and Finance, and get it back in a couple of weeks. So open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That is approved. Item 30.
Item 30, I think, is the last of our council motions besides two technical ones. Mr. Ridley Thomas? Item 30 is Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion regarding special events and the Vision Complex. Mr. Ridley Thomas, I understand that you want to perhaps amend this. You're up.
Mr. Fuhr, Madam President, the bifurcation of this motion is in order. The first part is appropriate as it relates to the Arts Development Fee Trust Fund, so it is designated as a source of revenue. However, the city attorney indicates the balance as it relates to salaries and equipment has to be reviewed as to the applicability of whether or not it can be tied to this particular fund. Therefore, I would just simply move the first part of it and ask that the second part of it be sent to Budget and Finance for the appropriate review.
And I would second that. Is there any reason for us to...
Can we just be clear exactly what that is? So we are then sending to committee the part that appears under increase?
Yes, correct.
And, but we are moving today to add the part that's under add and the part that's under decrease?
Yes, correct.
Okay?
It would be 100.
So the decrease then becomes, exactly, becomes $100,000?
Correct.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That is approved. Congratulations. It's 2:20. If we started at 10 o'clock, it would only be 1:00. Congratulations. It's 2:20. If we started at 10 o'clock, it would only be 1:20. Now we go to motions A and B.
Yes. Madam President, item A is, both items A and B are actually technical matters that instruct various city staff to pursue what they need to do to get the budget put together at the conclusion. I would move both A and B.
Okay. Anybody else? A and B. This is how we get the budget done. Open the roll on A and B. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is appro, whoops. Mr. Wax? No. Okay. That is approved. Hallelujah, I believe. Almost done.
Madam President, I want to actually turn to the CLA and Oars for a second. There are reports that are due back, a few of them here and there, pursuant to what was done today. I don't mean the ones that were sent to committee, but a report here and there. In order for those, for the final budget to be properly approved, those reports back need to be considered by the council in advance, correct?
We will include in the resolution requests for reports back as instructions.
Yeah, I think it's important that the council today be directing the relevant city departments to do what they need to do to comply with the timing necessary of the job done.
That's fine. We'll put that in the resolution. Resolution should be back, hopefully, very early part of next week.
So we do not have to have a special meeting on Thursday, correct?
No.
Where? Okay. Now we have two more people who wish to be heard. First, Mr. Wax, and then Mr. Savornich.
I wanted to just take a moment to commend Mr. Fuhrer. Seriously, I mean, I know that the budget is a process of a lot of people, in the mayor's office, and the staff, and all of that, and a lot of council members, but Mr. Fuhrer is running for citywide office, and the demands on that are enormous. And instead of being campaigning all the time, he has been diligently in committee, day in and day out, committee meeting after committee meeting, doing this job. And I think it should be noted and commended.
Thank you, John.
So let's conclude, so I can go and campaign.
Yeah, I know. We're trying here. Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. I had mentioned to you earlier that one of the items on today's agenda was item 112, on which we had a lot of discussion in regards to the harbor range. I would suggest, based upon what Mr. Fuhrer said earlier, that the reports that were requested in item 112 be included in the reports that are, need to come forward to Budget and Finance and Public Safety on that item, and would like to make that part of the request of the council today also.
Okay. If there's no objection to that, it will be done. Mr. Hernandez.
And, Madam Chair, one I wanted to, thank you for giving me the opportunity to sit on the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee, and also recognize my colleagues. As someone who's running to be out of office, it was a pleasure being able to go through the process with everybody, and the dialogue that went in on there. And I also wanted to take the time to commend Mr. Fuhrer for the time, his involvement, as well as him allowing all of us to participate in the process in a very equitable manner. And I think that's why I didn't ask as many questions as Mr. Holden did today.
Well, that was part of the reason for putting you on the committee. But I, too, would like to thank Mr. Fuhrer. I know this was a, it's always a heroic task, but trying to do two heroic tasks at once is really not fair, and you really are doing splendidly at it. And I believe, if nobody has any further announcements, we are ready to adjourn. That's it. We're out of here. See you tomorrow. Please try to come close to 10 o'clock. And also, by the way, we may start having quorum problems if people have to leave early. We have people saying they're going to leave at noon, which means you got to get here and get the meeting started in time to get it done by noon.